I call to order the regular city council meeting for September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one for Bothell. I invite everyone to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Please unmute your microphone and turn off your video while we display the banner. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the flag
of the United States of America. Thank you, everyone. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation twenty dash twenty-eight regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the City Clerk's Office via link in the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so it's not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption for the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Thompson, you're muted. I show he's here, but he's away just now. We'll move on. Councilmember McCullough. You're muted, Rosemary.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Dorr.
Here.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
I'm showing all present with Councilmember Thompson muted and away from. Nope, there he is. Can you say here?
Here.
Thank you. All present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Not seeing on to public engagement opportunities. One second. All right, diversity, equity, and inclusion, open house, September twenty-second, five thirty PM. You're invited to hear updates and provide input on the DEI work. Join consultant and staff to discuss several new public engagement opportunities. Register for the Zoom link and learn more at www.bothelwa.gov/diversity. All right, on to staff briefings. I believe we're going to be heading over to Human Resource Director, Matt Pruitt, and our consultant with Novak, Heather Gantz, for the City Manager Recruitment Update.
Hey, Mayor, I believe Heather. Oh, there she is. Okay. Heather Gantz from Novak Consulting is here today to give us an update on what's going on with the City Manager Recruitment Process. She needs no introduction, and I'll let her take it away.
Thanks, Matt. Hi, everybody. It's good to see you all. How are you all doing? We're off to a great start in the City Manager Recruitment. Wanted to give you some nuggets of information this evening. We have twenty-one applications to date so far from thirteen states. So that's exciting. Our reach is broad. We're covering all the way from the West Coast to the East Coast. We've reached out to over fourteen hundred candidates just through our networks, our existing database, new research. We're giving, we're getting some wonderful referrals from candidates and engaging in good conversations, just answering questions, providing additional information. Some interesting tidbits of information on the applicants so far. Sixteen years average government leadership experience and over ninety percent of the applicants have a master's degree or higher. We have also posted the position. We've done some advertising for some additional increased visibility. The Association of Washington Cities, ELGL, ICMA, and several other organizations. League of Women in Government, the Local Government Hispanic Network, Minority Professional Network, the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, LinkedIn. We've shared it on our social media accounts. We'll continue to do that throughout the process. So I'd like to say we're off to a good start. Some interesting candidates in the mix. Still have a ways to go. We will continue to recruit throughout the month of September into early October. Matt and I will continue to kind of provide you some updates along the way. And then I think, Matt, we're scheduled in early October to have a more detailed conversation and discuss interview process and further define that moving forward. Any questions? Excited? I know Aaron's probably excited.
No, that's a great, that's a great first report out. Those are some large numbers for the first cut, so that's great.
Yeah. Happy to answer any, any questions if anyone has anything. If not, Matt, did I miss anything? Nope, Shaggy said no.
Anyone have any questions or comments on it? Deputy Mayor Zornz.
No questions. Thank you for the information because we're all dying, do you know, to know who's nibbling, nibbling at our offers. But thank you for the scope of where you've reached out. Thank you for just a bird's eye view of experience and educational background, and I think that's probably all we need to know. When I see Matt smiling and Aaron smiling, I know we're on a good track and the council members are smiling. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's good to see everybody. Well, as I said, we'll continue to keep you informed, providing updates on a pretty routine basis about just how the applicant pool is shaping up, numbers, and then in early October, we'll dig into some additional details.
Great. Look forward to it.
Have a great night.
All right, on to stormwater update. Options to address climate change. And there we are. We have Janet here.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Just give me one moment to share my screen and we'll go ahead and get started. Okay. Can you let me know if you can see the screen? All right, perfect. Okay, so in October of last year, you asked me to come back in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one and provide you with an update on where we are with proposed actions to mitigate impacts from climate change related to stormwater. So this update is to provide you with information on what we know, where we are now, and our next steps going forward. Just to be clear, we are not addressing citywide anthropogenic causes of climate change, but how we can address the symptoms we're going to experience and mitigate their stormwater impacts. So the University of Washington's Climate Impacts Group has developed and run a series of models to study impacts to stream flows in our region due to climate change. Their reports state that we should experience increased stream flows in the winter time of up to sixteen percent and decreased stream flows in the summer of up to thirty-eight percent due to reduced snowpack by about twenty forty. This means we're going to experience an increase in stream water flow during the winter, which will reduce stormwater capacity and lead to localized flooding and of our streams and storm systems. Streams will also experience additional stress in the summertime due to the decreased flows and higher concentration of pollutants. These calculations don't factor in increased frequency and duration of heavy precipitation due to an increase in stormwater amounts, intensity, and those consecutive events, which are predicted to increase as well. Ambient air temperatures will increase during this time, especially in the summer, which will lead to higher stream temperatures and therefore lower dissolved oxygen levels, which will impact our fish and wildlife. Proposed solutions to address these impacts. We need to increase stormwater flow in the winter months to hold back more water and slow it down to allow streams more time to recover from rain events. We can accomplish this by increasing the amount of water development projects are required to detain by allowing more stormwater infiltration and by increasing vegetation to take up water and shade those streams during the warmer, drier months. To address the need for stormwater detention, we are proposing to update the amount of precipitation that developers and ourselves are required to use for modeling in their stormwater detention systems. What you're seeing here is the twenty-four hour rainfall amounts that are currently used in our design manual. These stormwater flows are over a twenty-four hour period and do not account for previous rain events. What we've experienced over the last ten years is an increase in multiple rain events in rapid succession, meaning that our storm systems haven't had enough time to drain before receiving a new amount of precipitation. This table shows you the times that we've exceeded the current design standards over the past ten years for a twenty-four, forty-eight, and then a seventy-two hour period. As an example, the multiple localized flooding events we experienced in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty were never more than a ten-year event, but they were preceded by rain that had reduced the capacity of the existing storm system. So the University of Washington, King County, Washdaw, and some other jurisdictions have utilized modeling from the U of Climate Impacts Group, which increases precipitation calculations by ten percent for their capital projects. We wanted to look at how this would change our current peak flows and determine whether this might be a viable option for Bothell. As you can see, it helps with some of those rain events to reduce the numbers of exceedances, but it doesn't help as much as we would like it to see. So we looked at twenty percent increase. When we update the model by twenty percent, it puts us in alignment with current rainfall amounts, and it helps with those successive rain events that greatly reduce the capacity over multiple days. Just to put this in perspective for you, with a ten percent increase, we'd be asking developers to detain the same amount of water that they do right now for the city of Redmond. With a twenty percent increase, we'd be asking developers to detain the same amount that they do right now for the city of Bellevue. So if you look at that yellow line, that's a ten percent increase from Bothell, and the green is a twenty percent increase. For this reason, what we're looking at right now is increasing that twenty-four hour precipitation isopluvio calculation by twenty percent. For future considerations, we've got a lot of considerations that are going to require a more robust citywide discussion, and they'll be recommended for consideration with the next comprehensive plan update. These considerations include implementation of impervious surface maximums for commercial properties. Currently, their billing is directly related to their impervious surface over the size of the parcel. So if they want to develop their property up to a hundred percent, they can minus setbacks and landscaping requirements. We also like to include reduced impervious surfaces incentives to reduce those existing for residential properties. For example, like I mentioned with the commercial properties, because they're directly built according to their impervious surfaces, all they have to do to reduce their billing amount is to reduce their impervious surfaces. But the same does not occur for residential properties. So we would be looking at incentives such as cost shares or maybe even a new billing structure that would provide incentives for them to reduce those impervious surface amounts. The other things that we're looking at are reduced opportunities, or sorry, protecting and increasing native vegetation, especially with stream buffers on both public and private property, and additional requirements based on onsite temperature conditions such as roofing materials, shading, and vegetation requirements to help us reduce those higher ambient stream temperatures. So for next steps, we're going to look at our rain event amounts, and we'll be considering those updates in two thousand and twenty-two for our two thousand and twenty-three Bothell Standards Update. And these other items, as I mentioned, will be brought for consideration to the Planning Commission in two thousand and twenty-two and possibly early two thousand and twenty-three with the idea of bringing those for council consideration in the next full comprehensive plan update. So with that, thank you so much for your time, and I'm available to take any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Dorr.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Janet, for the presentation. I'm excited to see that we're working on this. I did have one question. When you mentioned heat, was it urban heat mapping or something like that? Are we looking at or can we look at the amount of space that we provide for street trees? And what I'm getting at is when I, when I go to someplace like Tacoma, where they have huge canopies where they actually touch, and they're called kissing canopies. It's so cute. They shade the whole street. I noticed the difference is how wide that landscape strip is. Because currently, I feel like we just don't have enough space for large enough trees to grow. And in addition, when we don't provide enough space, that's when we end up having to replace our sidewalks because the roots get into the sidewalks, and then it just creates a maintenance issue. And so I'm wondering if we've thought about looking into maybe changing the requirements around, around that for those couple of reasons.
It's definitely something I'll write down and we can look into. Just like you mentioned, too, we have a full tree canopy analysis, and we put higher level of protections on forested because they provide more benefits than those single street trees, but they're not to be discounted. And they definitely provide a big service for shading, especially in the more urban areas. And so definitely something I'll put on the list that we can look into.
Great. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
That was a great question, Councilmember Dorr. And Janet, you are a hero of mine. I always love it when you come and you tell us things that are going on with stormwater because it is a significant part of making this city run and be healthy. And I think we all take it for granted, except for those who are doing, doing the heavy lifting on it. So I have to tell you, the heat island has me a little freaked out. And I see what's happening down in Renton and areas south of us, and I know that we're not that far off. And what, what troubles me is our stormwater spits right, I'm preaching to the choir, I know, but it's right off into the slough, and our salmon have a very, very small window that they can swim in. And so it behooves us, we're responsible for making sure that water is cool as possible going in. So wherever we can put trees and find ways to think about them smart, I realize that if they are, if they are trees doing what trees do, we talk, you know, we're going to, we're going to have to be sucking out all the detritus and that get down into our stormwater and jam things up. I had someone mention to me concern about Bothell Landing being a heat island right now. And I don't know, at some point, it's a rabbit trail, but I would love to have a memorial forest where people can remember loved ones, and we can start contributing forested areas where we have trees that give us some relief and, and are a place to remember the things that are important in life as well. So anyway, keep what, keep doing what you're doing, and I will be looking to see what goes before Planning Commission. It'll be exciting to hear the conversation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of questions. If a twenty percent increase in the requirements that we pass on to developers for impervious surfaces brings us up to what's happening now, how long do we expect that to be enough?
Right. And so that's what we were looking at as well, is those peak events that they've run through the models. They're looking at, you know, some of the spikes for up to three-inch rain events in Seattle. So we're trying to mitigate the expense that we're looking at and then, you know, reducing those amounts of exceedances. And what the twenty percent gets us to is really where we should be. And so we're running a cost analysis. That's what we'll bring to the council and the Planning Commission of this is how much it's going to cost a developer, you know, run a bunch of projects that have come through the system now. What would it cost them under, you know, the current conditions? What would it cost under ten? What would it cost under twenty? And then what's the benefit for that? Just to make sure that we're providing something that's, that's fair across the board and gets us where we need to be.
When we do that and go through that, is there any way that we can look at other types of development that may or may not currently be legal in most of our cities and see if that would be something that would help with this? If we were to give you that direction in terms of like, please look at this?
Certainly. What do you mean as far as not legal? Do you have ideas?
Well, in most of the city, the only housing you can build is a single-family home. And that, you know, there's just a whole lot of pavement that we need to pour for cars to get to all of those places, and it leads toward a lot less or a lot more impervious surface in the city. So if, you know, essentially looking at ways that we could house the same amount, if not more, people, but have less impervious surface, that seems to me it would, could be a big benefit for us. And I'm wondering if that's something we can look at with much more appropriate instruction that I'm giving you right now.
Definitely. You know, this is something that directly involves community development. Like I mentioned, there'll be robust citywide conversations, but it's definitely something that we can put forward on the docket for conversation.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Councilmember McCullough. On mute still.
I think you're still on mute.
Yep.
Okay, now, right?
Yep.
Yes. So could you speak about the efforts of different people to do stream restoration?
Like current efforts for the city or?
Or groups, community groups?
Okay. So currently, for the city that I can think of offhand are the former Wayne Golf Course. We're moving forward with the feasibility study for the salmon habitat restoration that'll definitely improve conditions on the Wayne Golf, former Wayne Golf property. We have got several groups that we work with in the community, the Whale Scouts and the Friends of North Creek Forest. There's, there's several active groups in the community that are working to protect and improve our, our forests. I'm trying to think of anything else that's near term. As far as the, you know, future projects, we have one big one, and you know, as far as stormwater goes, just because of budget. So the former Wayne is the one that we're focusing on right now. We are doing planting along Park Creek in the North Creek Business Park. That one is, there's one section that's complete, and then the next session, we're, we're working with the King Conservation District and the surrounding business owners to finish the repairing enhancement along Park Creek all the way to the Sumamish River, barring the section of four oh five that we think is going to expand. We're just kind of waiting to see on that portion. Down the road, that might be a larger restoration effort to make sure we've got slope and flow to the Sumamish and provide proper connection. Up north, I know we've talked about opportunities with the North Creek Forest and trying to think if there's anything further up north right now. We've got small projects that we do with the Parks Department all the time on public lands to provide opportunities for volunteering in addition to removing invasive species and planting natives. That's all I can think of offhand.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the data and the analysis. I would echo Councilmember Thompson's kind of question of kind of raising the limits or setting the new targets to basically match where we should be right now and without getting up to kind of more of a anticipation of where they might be. So, but it sounded like you'll be looking at that as, as well, once you go into the, the deep dive and the further analysis. So I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we will now move on to council committee reports. Does everyone, anyone have a report they would like to make on a committee? Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I was at the Sound Cities the other day. Initially started off with how are everybody doing, and we're all about the same, whether we have in-line or in-person meetings or not. But they're asking for volunteers for boards and committees. Go into the Sound Cities website, and they have a number of boards and committees that need to be filled by the first year, and, and they'd like to get as many applicants as possible. So they're reaching out to all the cities to ask for their help.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
It's just a more of a community interest. Councilmember Thompson, myself, and interim City Manager Lanart, we met with the campuses, Cascadia and U of Dev Bothell, and something that the public might want to be preparing for as they're going up and down Beardsley for the foreseeable future. If they weren't aware that the campus would be putting, starting their phase one project of the new dorms about the same time, right across the street from the fire station, they might want to put that on their radar as they commute through Bothell and plan accordingly.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, not seeing anything. We will move on to visitor comment. So I believe we have some written.
Thank you, Mayor Olson. Yes, we received four written comments, and those were all submitted to council and will be made part of the record. The first one was from Brian Mitchell, who wrote in opposition of keeping Main Street closed. Andrew Nelson wrote in regards to creating a police civilian commission. David Levitin wrote in support of keeping Main Street closed, and Susan Gardner wrote in support of keeping Main Street closed. I do not have anybody signed up this evening to speak live under visitor comment, but if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anybody, Mayor Olson.
All right. Thank you. So on to a consent agenda. Nothing was pulled. Councilmember Agnew.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Councilmember Dewer.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Agnew to approve the consent agenda as presented with the second by Councilmember Dewer. Any discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorr.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. On to our next item, AB twenty-one dash one thirty-one. Public hearing to consider general downtown corridor overlay and the related code amendments. I'll now open the public hearing, and we'll call on our senior planner, Dave Boyd, to present.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I am going to share a screen here shortly. Okay, are you seeing that?
Yes.
All right, we are here tonight to consider general downtown corridor overlay and related code amendments. The purpose of this meeting is to consider the Planning Commission recommendation with a few minor tweaks that I'll explain later that came after the Planning Commission recommendation. The, there are three basic issues in this recommendation. One is to allow four floors and 45 feet throughout the current three floor overlay with affordability requirements added in. The second one is to expand flexible setback rule. And that would apply throughout the general downtown corridor. It's a rule that already applies to adjacent to existing single family zones. This expansion would allow it adjacent to adjacent single family development within the same zone. And then finally, it includes a definition and sets parking requirements for micro apartments. And those will apply citywide. The the image here on your right shows, and this was the result of a private application from a prospective developer who owns two parcels that are where the red star is. And their proposal was to apply this, the fourth story, allow the fourth story in the area within the overlay, which is the light purple, the lilac with the white cross hatches on this, on this map. They proposed allowing it east of the line of 108. We felt that, that we should consider a larger area given the, where the current transit center on the campus is at the yellow dot and the proposed new transit center right there on Beardsley Avenue. All of this GDC overlay is within a half mile of those, this major transit center. So we thought it was at least worth looking at that entire area. And the proposal does maintain special setbacks and height limits adjacent to single family zones, which are shown on this map. The, the, the the orange lines, the different shades of orange lines are the special setback area and the different shades of purple lines are the, the upper level setback area. And we'll get into those in more detail later. The packet includes the application from First Olympic Investments. It includes the Planning Commission findings, conclusions and recommendations, which include an exhibit with the annotated code amendments as recommended by Planning Commission and exhibits received during the Planning Commission process. Attachment three includes exhibits received since the Planning Commission recommendation. And since then, we've received and you have received three or four additional comment letters. And then attachment four is the proposed ordinance, not annotated. And it includes a single affordability requirement for the entire overlay. That's the change from the Planning Commission recommendation. Following the Planning Commission recommendation, as we did additional analysis of of the affordability requirements, we determined that we could simplify it and have a single affordability requirement for the entire overlay. And I'll get into that in more detail later as well. And the ordinance, if adopted tonight, will have an effective date that coincides with the multifamily tax exemption ordinance that was passed on July 20. The attachment five includes additional multifamily tax exemption analysis that was done by Mike Stanger of Arch. And I do want to acknowledge he is available here to answer questions about that analysis or any of their analysis related to, to this item. This additional analysis was done per council's request on their adoption, on your adoption of the multifamily tax exemption ordinance. And we included in this packet because much of the analysis that was done for that did focus on the general downtown, these general downtown corridor amendments, including the ones relating to micro apartments. The extent of the overlay I touched on before. We proposed to planning commission to at least consider the entire three floor overlay. And in the end, that was the recommendation to include the entire area. It, that recommendation does rely on the special setbacks and height limits adjacent to single families that are in the existing code to provide that protection to the adjacent single family areas. The affordability requirements are based on the additional capacity and including the parking reductions for micro apartments in the case of micro apartment development. Plus, they include wrapped into those requirements is an eight year multifamily tax exemption. Without, and I do want to note that without any of these amendments, the existing zoning would allow redevelopment, including micro apartments. So it would allow development up to three stories in all cases. And it would allow micro apartments, but there's nothing in this amendment that specifically encourages or certainly doesn't require micro apartment development. The map here shows five different areas within the GDC overlay that we looked at and analyzed. The blue dots are the parcels that are not impacted by the special height limits and setbacks. So, special setback requirements. The, the analysis that we did and the recommendation from Planning Commission recognizes that these special setback requirements provide adequate protection from the adjacent single family zones without the need for the added three story overlay. So those setback is a 29 foot setback, which includes a 24 foot type two landscaping buffer. So that's shown on the, the left image here. That applies where a property is immediately adjacent to a single family zone. Where a property in the GDC overlay is across the street from single family zoning, the upper level setback does still apply for the first 65 feet from the setback required front setback line. That's the same for an adjacent property parcel. Part of the reason, the rationale behind this is that in general, zoning tries to keep similar development or similar scale development on both sides of a street. So there's a certain cohesion on the street. So the three story limit is intended to match the maximum three story height limit for single family zoning. As we got into more detailed analysis and we got additional feedback from the community, we heard from the both the community members, Long Valley View in the single family zones, Long Valley View and Circle Drive. And there was some consideration given to eliminate that area. But we also heard then from a number of property owners in the Larive condominiums who have a portion of their site that's vacant and they are facing some substantial bills for retrofitting their buildings for water penetration, their building envelope, and are looking at selling a portion of their property in order to cover those costs. So the current three floor overlay would, based on our analysis, result in a building that would have to step down toward the south. So it maintains the three story height along Valley View and across the street from the single family homes, along Valley View. But it would have to step down towards SR 522 to the south. This is a somewhat basic diagram. In reality, the level that's shown with the one on the, on the right half here would probably be parking on that full level. So you'd basically get two and a half stories of development capacity under the current zoning. Removing the three floor overlay would allow four floors on the south side of the building. With the side facing Valley View and the single family housing across Valley View would remain at three stories. So the, the impact in terms of view blockage or height bulk and scale would be the same even with the height limit lifted here. What it does for the potential development is it would allow three full stories. So about a 20% increase in capacity. The affordable housing provisions then take into account that additional capacity. And they also provide automatic qualification for an eight year multifamily tax exemption. And, and those, those affordability levels were in the packet that was approved on July 20th with the, the full multifamily tax exemption program. And as I said, as we got into that analysis in more detail and working with Arch and Mike Stanger, the recommendation was that adding that eight year MFTE into the equation kind of leveled out the difference between the areas that are impacted by the special height and setback limits and those that are not. So we were able to simplify the code amendments to have a single affordability requirement for the entire overlay area. It also included an incentive, a voluntary incentive that developments could qualify for a 12 year multifamily tax exemption with additional affordable units, 20% with the 12 year MFT as opposed to, compared to 10% with the eight year MFTE. Another aspect of this, these code amendments is the, what we're calling the variable setback requirement. This is already in effect in the general downtown corridor where developed, new development, that's single family zoning. And what it does in most of this, this area, the single family zoning is uphill from the GDC zoning. And the standard setback in GDC, the standard front setback is 20 feet. So this provision would allow developers to essentially slide the building down and away from the single family development and decrease the front back setback to a minimum of five feet along with a commensurate increase in the rear setback. So it moves it further from and lower than the adjacent single family development. The only change that we're proposing here is to apply that not just to single family zones, but to even to single family development within the same zone. And there are a couple of instances where that might apply. And again, the, without the amendment to allow four stories that downhill side of the building would have to step down to meet the three floor overlay. Finally, the micro housing issues. Here is a schematic plan of the applicant's proposal for those two sites along Beardsley across from Husky Village. They, this includes 37, 46 micro apartments, basically very small studio apartments with mini kitchens. And, and then two full sized large kitchens per floor that would be shared with the other units on the floor. This is the first or second floor planned view, the third and fourth floors include some larger loft units and don't fill out the full area because of the height limit, the building steps back. The code amendments eliminate what might be called a loophole. We currently would allow micro apartments, but we don't have a definition of micro apartments. And we, we know that in some jurisdictions, these have been proposed to count the entire area suite of apartments that share the kitchen as a dwelling unit. And in this case, that would, that would be a very drastic reduction in the, in the parking requirement. So we do define each micro, each separate leasable micro apartment as a dwelling unit. And then we do establish a parking requirement specifically for micro apartments that would apply citywide. The applicant proposed parking requirement of 0.75 spaces per unit. We did some analysis using the King County Right Size Parking Calculator that confirmed that based on the proposed project and the pricing that's proposed for these units. And it did confirm that as a, as a reasonable parking requirement. There has been some question, both in the Planning Commission discussion and subsequently that even at 0.75 per unit, that that may be higher than some of these, these projects may require, especially as this one is immediately adjacent to a major transit stop. And there is a, on the docket, an examination of our parking reductions and to look at allowing further reductions with a parking study and with some additional affordability built in that, that we intend to bring back to start the process with Planning Commission in the third quarter this year. And that's, that goes back to the state mandated parking minimums that were, were approved last year that, that we did defer that, that option for market rate housing. So again, this is just explaining that. And this would be, as I said, this would be applicable citywide for micro apartments citywide. So with that, I'll stop sharing and open this up for council questions and clarifications. If I want you can take, we'll take testimony. And, and then a motion and vote to approve the recommended action. And if, I'll stop sharing now, but if council members want to go back to any of these images, I can, I can put them back up. And if I'll stop sharing now, but if council members want to go back to any of these images, I can I can put them back up.
Who would like to ask a question, make a comment? Deputy Mayor Jorance.
Y'all are just so quiet. I know, I know the comments are coming. I have. I don't need to go back to a slide. I was going to ask about what the blue dots were and you explained that, so we can skip that. What does Seattle and Kirkland require for parking on their micros? Do we know off the top of our heads?
Seattle, for any housing in Seattle that's within. Within a station area. They have waived any parking minimums. There's there's no parking minimum.
Okay.
Kirkland, I don't know specifically. It's possible that Mike Stanger has that information since he does work with with Kirkland. But in general, most communities are reducing parking requirements within station areas and and were were. Required to do so by the House Bill nineteen twenty-three that we adopted measures to comply with last year.
Okay, so it's point seven five for micros right now.
We're proposing that for micro.
And then is it two per dwelling unit that aren't micros with guest parking for five? I'm looking at it's on page one nineteen of our agenda packet.
The citywide requirement is two per unit plus one per five units. Your gas parking, so basically comes to two point two per unit.
Okay.
But we have reduced different parking requirements in both downtown and Canyon Park due to their good transit service.
That's true. Which side of LaRev is is the property that they're looking to sell? Is it on the, I'm trying to. Figure out my compass, like the northwest or the southeast side? Is it downtown side or? You've done.
The side towards downtown, the west portion of their property.
Oh, okay, perfect, okay. And then what? I should have this memorized. I don't. What what kind of plants go into landscape too? Do any tall? Growing trees go in there?
Yes, there's a. Percentage of both conifer and deciduous trees required as well as understory planting.
Okay, now I you and I were both back when we had this whole first big whole downtown Sebary discussion and I recall. Buildings being allowed to slide forward, but you're saying for general downtown corridor that. That wasn't in place because for some reason I thought it was.
It was adopted for general downtown corridor, but only adjacent to single family zoning. And in this case, since the proposed micro project was adjacent to. A single development, family development that was done within the GDC, you know, since the downtown plan was adopted even. We thought. Allowing it in that situation made sense.
Okay, oh, that's that was thoughtful. Thank you for doing that. Question, if they slide forward, because you know, we just finished talking about pervious versus impervious. If they slide forward. Does that do, does the builder have flexibility on whether they pave that back? Area or can we expand and create a a larger landscape buffer?
The, well, within the GDC, there's there's the. Twenty-four foot required landscape buffer doesn't, that doesn't apply. And and we're not proposing that we apply that special setback and and landscape buffer. But in general, the. Development does, or the development regulations do require. Setback areas that aren't devoted to parking or or other circulation to be landscaped.
Okay, so you could, they could create a gathering area. The planters, would they be allowed to put a dumpster back there? A rabbit trail that you don't want to go down, but in theory, could a dumpster go back there?
In theory, if it was sheltered, but of course, the big, the bigger issue with. Dumpster and garbage collection is access to the streets, so they. They typically go toward the front side and again, they need to be shielded and and managed appropriately.
Okay, all right. Let's see, and the three story overlay is for the street side, the far side away from residential. Where we're removing that, it's allowing to go four stories, it's not next to. Residential homes.
It wouldn't be against to, again. Jason.
Facing.
Single family in any situation, single family zoning.
Okay, in any situation.
Right.
Okay. And then MFTEs, what is the, without an MFT, what is the target AMI on the micros?
The way we've structured this within the within the GDC overlay is that the eight year MFT is. Is calculated into the required. The mandatory affordable housing requirement, so. A developer could choose not to. Take the eight year. Tax exemption, but they would still have the same affordability requirement. Outside of this GDC overlay area. Again, there's the outside of any area that has a mandatory. Affordability requirement, the MFT is is voluntary. And I see that. Mike Stanger is on the screen, so and I don't have the specific number, but if if there is one, he would have it.
I guess one of my question, I guess what I'm getting at is the bill, this, the builder in this particular case is, are they aiming for a certain AMI? Just generally for their micro, I mean, what what is the market that they're aiming for?
Well, they have, and it's on the record in in their written comments that. They would like to see a AMI of sixty-five percent for twenty percent of the units. Our analysis indicates that based on the. Their proposed rent levels, market rate rent levels is that the the project itself would be sixty to sixty-five. I mean, the market rate would be sixty to sixty-five percent. That's why we're we're proposing a fifty percent requirement.
Okay, thank you.
For micros.
Thank you for thinking about that and because I was wondering how close the two were, so thank you for that. And then this is just an aside. The builder, they plant, do you know if they're planning on those shared kitchens? Are they going to be equipping those kitchens with? You know, the plates and the the cookware and stuff, or is that something that everybody in the micro brings and donates their own? Do you, do you have that conversation gone that far?
No, it hasn't gotten that far. They they are proposing that this these units and I and the kitchens would be furnished, so they would have. But we haven't gotten to the point of. Place settings and cutlery.
Well, it sounds like they're making it user friendly, so that's that's good. So thank you for asking, answering all my questions. My only other thing is to thank the planning commissioners who took time to come out and walk Sunrise Valley through Hill. So, thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm really impressed with this work. The very fact that we could have micro apartments citywide. That allows for affordability. Is really important for our town. Our town is. A university and college town. We also want to have a walkable community. So the more we can move forward with the kind of progress you're making. With these recommendations will certainly get us to what where we would hope to be with affordability, with walkability. And with serving our students at our universities and campuses. So I want to thank you for your work. I'm very impressed. And I'm glad that we had the opportunity for the community to engage. I know we have people who are concerned and other people who are in support, but I think it's a good direction, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Boyd, or for the presentation. I think this is really meaningful progress towards getting affordable housing. And I I really appreciate the process and that planning commission was so receptive and responsive. To the community concerns, I want to thank everyone that participated in that. I heard there there was a lot of public comment and I know that sometimes. That can be tough, so I appreciate the responsiveness. I just. I I think this is a a great step toward getting more affordable housing and I. I would say that my only pause was around the parking requirements for the micro units, only because I anticipate that would. Those migraine units would be in probably college housing and. I know that originally the UDA Bothell and Cascadia campus was meant to be a commuter college. But I look forward to it not being so much of a commuter commuter college because in my mind. That's just importing traffic, whereas they, if they live in our town, they're spending money in our town and they're not driving to and from, and I think that's a good thing, and I think. Most of us who've gone to college have experienced. The being stuck with no car and bumming rides to the grocery store, and I just think that's part of the process. It's like a rite of passage. And so I guess I I would just. Hope that that we're not providing too much parking so that we're not encouraging. Students to live on campus. I know there's probably difference, a difference of opinion in terms of whether we want to commuter or. Live at college, but in my mind, again, I think we want to reduce the amount of commuting and the amount of traffic and and that means. Having college students live in our town and bring their money spent to our town as well, so that that would be my only comment. Other than that, I think it's a great compromise and I thank everybody for their work on this.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to echo, I think, just about all of my fellow council members that have spoken so far and just saying. Thank you for the process to both staff and the planning commission. You know, these are. This is a subject that is near and dear to the hearts of our residents and I see fingerprints of. I don't want to say a compromise, but just understanding that we need to meet the needs of the people that live here at the same time is meeting the needs of the people who don't live here yet, so. Thank you for that. I have a couple of questions. On the space, and basically, I'm just going to kind of call back to the conversation about impervious surfaces in Bothell. How much space on the property do we require in our code for drainage on this property? For pervious surfaces, if you will.
I would actually have to look that up within the GDC district. I want to say it's. Impervious surface allowance is is relatively high, maybe eighty percent, but. I'll try to look that up.
Okay.
And confirm that.
Is that something that we require? Or is that just sort of how the project came together?
I know that that there is a impervious service limit in the code and I and I believe eighty percent is actually the downtown transition, the. The general downtown corridor and the SR five twenty-two corridor, I believe, are are at seventy percent of memory serves, but.
Okay.
Try to confirm that.
The reason I ask is because like council member Duer brought up the parking requirements, and I think the the person that we came and gave us a presentation said roughly a third of their. Units usually require vehicles in that kind of property. I guess how much space on the property are we requiring to be paved? At the exact same time that we are talking about how to reduce impervious surface in Bothell. And I know that in this property, they dig and go under, but like total real estate for point seven five parking spaces per unit, what would that roughly be?
Well. Parking space is about three hundred square feet, so approximately two hundred and twenty-five square feet. Per unit.
And there are how many units?
This proposal is for a hundred and eighty-one units.
Okay. Awesome, so that is almost, that is forty-one thousand almost square feet, so coming up on an acre, call it a horse acre worth of pavement. That we're requiring to be laid just for this one project. Cool. I obviously, by my questions, I'm not hiding it. I I think that's too much and I think that's too high. Because like council member Duer said, that's just going to make more traffic and that's going to make more pollution that makes climate change worse and. Clearly, people need a place to park cars. We don't get to live in the world that I wish we lived in yet. I I would like to see it be lower than that. It won't affect my vote tonight. I'll be voting in favor of this. I just wanted a chance to sit on a soapbox in a meeting for a little bit. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, and and I did look up the impervious surface, we actually call it now, hard surface coverage is my my first. Collection was correct, it's eighty percent, eighty percent is allowed.
Eighty percent, and how big is the property roughly?
This property, I think, is around two and a half acres.
Okay, so. Eighty percent of two, so basically, we're requiring a whole lot more pavement to be laid than we're requiring space to stay for drainage. That's, you don't have, you don't have to answer that, that's, that's my point. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank you, Deputy Mayor, for asking a lot of the questions that I was going to ask. I I I actually agree with a lot of the things, comments that were made earlier. I think that we're we're definitely moving in the right direction. I want to thank everybody for the approach of working together and collaborating, the planning commission. City staff for all hard work and and dedication to this. I think. As a community, we're trying to find ways to create affordable housing within our community. And for city staff to be working with developers to to find a good balance, I think is is a great approach. It's not going to be perfect on the first try, but at least we have an opportunity to to put something forward tonight. And then move into the future and then have additional dialogue and discussion. A lot of people have tried a lot of things around the region. Some things have worked, some haven't. They've had to be nimble and make changes to the decisions that they've made. But as long as we leave the door open and make those changes as we evolve as community, I think we're moving in the right direction, so I I will be supporting this recommended action.
Well, I think many people have spoken about the process that has gone on and and definitely in the agenda bill tonight, you can really follow. How much push and pull there was and how much just analysis and thinking that happened on this topic. Over the. Time that it it took to get this done, which was not any short, quick little project, so I appreciate the planning commission, the. Community development and all that's and all this this staff that worked on this, so. Mike Stanger coming in, helping out, providing that expertise, so I think we, I think has everyone, a lot of people have said we struck a balance here. And I think we. Are achieving a a very good first shot at this, so you know, we will have to make tweaks as we go, how it custom tailor it to Bothell, but. I think this is a a good first shot, so I'll be in support of this as well. And now let me ask if there was any public comment on this.
Thank you, Mayor Allison. We did receive four written comments which were provided to the council and will be. Made part of the record. Those comments were from Greg Miller, Ray Thomas, David Levitin and Bonnie Plotner. Again, those will be made part of the record for anybody who wants to. Again, those will be made part of the record for anybody who wants to see those. And I do have one person in the audience that has signed up to speak this evening, and that is Ray Thomas. So if you give me just a second, we will get him paneled in. Mr. Thomas, you're on mute, but once you're ready, please unmute and you'll have three minutes to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Thomas, if you're ready.
Thank you. Sorry for the change in background, but previous meeting, still sitting in there. So I want to thank the council for an opportunity to speak. And I also want to thank the planning staff and the Planning Commission. When the residents of La Rev and owners of La Rev Conveniums first heard about this, we thought it was pretty much a slam dunk. We thought it was great. We thought it clarified a bit of what the restrictions and potential for development on our property that unfortunately, we're somewhat being forced to look at at selling. And I think the Planning Commission staff made adjustments and responded to public comments and listened and came up with a proposal that sounds like something that most of you support. And we certainly support staying in the GDC overlay and the code amendments as proposed. I don't know if I have any time left, but if I do, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council members might have. But thank you.
Thank you. That's all I showed, signed up to speak live tonight. However, if anybody is in the audience and wishes to speak to this topic, please use the raise hand function and we will panel you in. I'm not seeing anyone, Mayor Olson.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Doer.
I'd move to approve the proposed ordinance for.
Recording in progress.
Second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Doer to approve the proposed ordinance for the GDC overlay and related code amendments with a second by Councilmember McAuliffe. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Recording in progress.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's do one more item here and then we can take a break after that. So let's do AB 21-132, Consideration of Resolution Supporting King County Health Through Housing. Next page. And I believe, oh, right here, we'll be, let's turn it over to our interim city manager, Aaron Lenhart.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I'm just referencing page 135 in the council packet online. This item asks the council to consider if the city should support the King County Health Through Housing Program by authorizing King County Department of Community and Human Services to begin a real estate search in Bothell for potential health through housing properties. As you may recall from the presentation from King County Department of Community and Human Services on June 1st, King County enacted a one-tenth of one cent of sales tax revenues to purchase hotels and other single-room settings for use as emergency and permanent supportive housing. This funding will also support ongoing operations of this housing. King County's goal is to partner with local jurisdictions to create up to 1,600 emergency housing and permanent supportive housing units for households that are either chronically homeless or at risk of being chronically homeless. Kelly Ryder from King County Department of Community and Human Services is here this evening. If you have questions about the initiative, and I, there's Kelly, and I am also here to answer questions. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. And now I'll look for questions. Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, interim city manager Lenhart. I had a question of the King, Kelly. Do we know or have projections on the coming, the eviction moratorium ending? Do we have any projections on how we think that will impact? I think we know how it will impact, but to what degree that will impact the numbers of people experiencing homelessness?
Thank you, Councilmember. I do not have specific statistics for you tonight. I'd be happy to follow up with some statistics about what we're seeing as need in our program. I think the last I saw was we've got about 18,000 applications countywide for folks looking to be served. And so, as you said, I think we know what the potential impact is, and that is that it could have a stark increase in our homelessness experience. We are committed as King County to making sure that that doesn't happen with the tools that we have available. But it is going to be a challenging time here as we approach the end of September. We have recently announced our partnership with the Housing Justice Project to be able to make sure that they have access to rental assistance funds if households approach eviction. And our in the eviction system, so to speak, or an eviction has been filed to make sure that we're really catching folks right before they could fall off. We are also expediting advanced payments to landlords to make sure that we can get as many resources out there as quickly as possible. So happy to follow up with more details about our rental assistance program. But yes, there is absolutely an eviction cliff, so to speak, out there that we are fighting hard to prevent.
Do we know, on average, and maybe you also don't know this, but on average, once someone's evicted, how long it takes them to get back into housing?
Those are some really good questions. I do not have that. I can share with you afterwards a link to the study that we did for our Youth Family Homelessness Prevention Initiative. And we absolutely know that preventing homelessness is much less costly than actually addressing homelessness after it starts. We also know that once someone becomes evicted, the record that they get from having an eviction in their background prevents them from regaining stable housing. So it's absolutely a challenge.
Can you tell me, sorry, I have a lot of questions. Hopefully, I'm not putting you too much on the spot. Can you tell me, this program's been in place for a little bit. What kind of statistics do we have around the success rate of this program so far?
Yeah, and I want to clarify, just as we're shifting a little bit, our rental assistance program. I think you're asking about our Health Through Housing Initiative. Is that correct?
Yes, sorry, yes.
So our Health Through Housing Initiative has been effectively in place since last fall, when the county council implemented the tax and adopted the program. I will say what hasn't been in place yet is the housing. So so far, King County has been able to acquire, or almost set to acquire, 859 units toward our goal of 1,600 units. We do not yet have individuals living in them. There's one exception that's a bit on the border where one of our shelter de-intensification buildings in the city of Seattle, we have acquired and are shifting it to Health Through Housing, but it's really not yet in a state where I would say we can measure success. And here's what's happening at the grand scale of folks experiencing Health Through Housing services. What we do know in the bigger picture is that permanent supportive housing has actually been around for a long time, especially in King County. And many people across the world, I've heard people from Denmark have come to explore our permanent supportive housing model, have come to study what King County's permanent supportive housing looks like and the strategy that we've been able to deploy here in our region. And what we know is it is less costly, it provides more stability, and that it is an incredibly effective way of addressing chronic homelessness. The closest research that I can provide for tonight is that during our shelter de-intensification work during COVID, we were able to have the University of Washington study the outcomes of folks in those buildings. Again, they weren't yet in housing, they were still in shelter. And that's a big difference between what we'll be providing and what we were providing. But even then, we know that we were increasing exits to stable housing. We were reducing 911 calls and emergency response. And we were increasing the safety and security of the residents there just by providing that bed, bath, and a locked door. So we know that these buildings are successful. Health through housing buildings are not yet open.
Thank you for that. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, do, are there statistics around a homeless, a person experiencing homelessness, their journey back to, let's say, being full contributing members of society, going from homeless to full contributing members, and then going to permanent or not permanent supportive housing and becoming contributing, contributing members of society? In other words, what are the odds of someone being able to get their life back in an order and become productive if they don't have a place to live versus if we're trying to do that from, say, them living in a tent in the woods?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. What we know is for the folks that Health Through Housing is serving, they have been homeless for more than 12 months out of the last three years. There is also at least one household member that has a significant disability. And so for these members, if some other solution was going to address their needs, it would have happened by now. These folks don't just need a bit of a leg up. They need stable housing to be provided and they need intense services. And so the Health Through Housing and the permanent supportive housing model really has been created to stabilize and support these specific individuals that need this type of intervention. As we spoke to the Rental Assistance Program, the Youth Family Homelessness Prevention Initiative, those programs are targeted toward a very specific population that's really on the edge of homelessness. For Health Through Housing, these are folks that need permanent supportive housing. I'm pulling right, I'm pulling up right now on our homelessness data dashboard. There's information about permanent supportive housing successes. And the things that we really measure closely are whether folks stay permanently housed. So what's important to us is that once we house them, that they remain housed. Many of these households are seniors and older adults. As I said, they're people with disabilities. And so they may need permanent supportive housing or some sort of supports for the remainder of a long period of time. But what we want to make sure that we measure is that once we house them, they stay housed and they reduce their incidence of crisis. So across our system right now in King County, 96% of our programs are maintaining permanent housing. And we also have measured kind of cost comparisons. So what would happen if we put somebody in permanent supportive housing versus something else in our system taking care of them? And so, as I think Councilmember McNeil heard last week at the Regional Policy Committee, what we know is that for the cost of three days at Harborview and for the cost of three months in King County jail, which is often the alternative for folks that are currently on the streets, we can afford one year of permanent supportive housing. So it's a much more cost to be able to serve folks in housing, and it is successful.
That's an unbelievable statistic, that three days versus a year. Wow. So I guess to, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. So these are people that are unlikely to ever get back to housing on their own because of significant, significant disabilities. So they're, they will, they would, if not for these facilities, they would most likely remain homeless, is what you're saying.
I do believe that for a large portion, that is certainly the current trajectory. We will, with wraparound services in these buildings, be able to support every household to be able to become as independent and self-sufficient as possible. And so there will be some folks that, once they're able to stabilize in these units and be able to cope with the trauma that they've been experiencing on the street, they may very well be able to stabilize and rejoin employment that they had former, prior to homelessness. There will be other folks that absolutely need continued services. And we also have a model across King County that we now call Move On, where we provide a lower intensity of support for folks that in our very costly housing community need affordable housing, but they may not need the intensity of services anymore. Once they've been able to stabilize in permanent supportive housing and be able to address behavioral health, physical health, other types of needs, they may need a lower support level of housing. So there's kind of three different ways that folks may be able to stabilize in housing. And our goal is really to be able to work with each individual households to meet their specific needs.
So I imagine without this housing, getting them the services they need is near impossible because of where they're, where they're living.
That's correct. I feel like you're singing our song. What we know is that when somebody tries to go out and be able to serve folks, there are some folks that absolutely can engage with behavioral health and other services on the street. But when you are facing that trauma, I think for many of us, we can just relate to our experiences dealing with COVID. When I had kids home for those three months all the time, asking me to engage in some higher level functioning, asking me to change my routine would have been incredibly challenging. We are asking folks to really transition their lives to be able to engage in services in a new way. And what we know is that key to a locked door is really the first entry point in their successful path to being able to do that.
Thank you very much. I'm going to presume that we're not going to just ask questions and we should, well, we should make our comments at the same time. So after grilling Kelly, I already knew where I, where I was going and how I felt. But I wanted to get some more basic information. I'm fully in support of this. I don't think you solve homelessness unless you house the homeless. It's that simple. And in order to get, get people back to where they can be self-sufficient, the most efficient way to do that is to house them and have those services available. And don't we all wish that every member of our society could be independent and self-sufficient, I mean, at the basic level? So I'm fully in support of this, and I thank Kelly for coming to speak to us.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we all recognize that we have a mental health crisis across the state and across this nation. And there just isn't enough services or opportunities to really assist them. So this is an opportunity for us as a city, as a county, to address this problem. But I would like you, if you could, please to speak about the nonprofit, to have the expertise to actually help these people through, through housing, through employment, and getting back to their status of good health.
Sure. So for each of the buildings that we are citing in our Health Through Housing portfolio, we are partnering closely with the local jurisdiction to competitively procure the providers that will be on site. The services, as you said, will be comprehensive wraparound services to be able to connect folks with entitlement programs, support their behavioral and physical health needs, and, you know, day-to-day living needs, right? If you have been living on the street for a long time, you might need a little help. How do I, you know, make sure that my fan is turned on in the bathroom to prevent all those sorts of things? There's also going to be staff that is there 24/7, make sure that if anything should come up, day or night, somebody will be there to take care of it. We have a roster right now from a request for qualifications process that we went through to identify folks in a couple of different categories of service provision. So the service provider, the operator, or community-based organization is actually what we've identified the provider, and then also to do outreach. And as we move forward with each site, we partner with the city to be able to draft the specific procurement, make sure that we've identified the specific priorities of that jurisdiction, and identify an organization that can be successful, both for the population that we are working to serve, as well as within that community. So the way that I've talked about it with folks is you want someone who has So the way that I've talked about it with folks is you want someone who has experience being able to support folks in permanent supportive housing, people who have traditionally done these types of services. You also want folks who are really able to provide culturally competent and trauma-informed care. And so we're really leaning into trying to make sure that providers are either trained or based in the communities that we know disproportionately are impacted by homelessness. And at the end of the day, that means it's our Black Indigenous and people of color communities. And then lastly, the folks that really understand the geography that they're working in is really important. And so understanding that if you are working in North or East King County, you're probably gonna wanna connect them with Hope Link for food bank or for utility assistance, that you know kind of who the different resources are that you can tap to be able to connect them to for services that aren't being directly provided in the building. So those are the kind of three different ways we're thinking about the types of expertise or competency we want the service providers to have. But we want to make sure that we're closely in tune with the local jurisdiction as we select them.
Thank you. And I, I would like to say this is really, really critically important. And it's important that we plan now because we don't want to end up with a lot of homeless people that we don't have any answers or solutions for. So I appreciate this work and I'm very excited to see it moving forward.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Thank you, Kelly. I have some questions I'm, I'm asking you are going to be something that the community is going to be asking you. So part of your procuring housing building sites, you don't need the city to be, to approve or disapprove that, right? That's just, that is a between your agency and the seller, correct?
So what we are required to do by state law is to consult the local jurisdiction where we are citing a building. At the end of the day, it is a King County acquisition since we are the ones that are financing it and have to pay the bill to the seller. But we want to consult very closely with the local jurisdiction to inform that work. And I think this conversation is part of that, but certainly not the only step.
Okay, okay. So consulting is, is finding ways that we can collaborate and have considerations that the, the city wants you to be mindful of. So, okay, so my questions, well, one, you know, as I go through Bothell, I can think of a couple of buildings that the surrounding neighbors would like to see move from sex trafficking and drug activity that those hotels seem to be having, experiencing a lot of. And you're talking about some, having the people who are living there having support and monitoring of what's going on versus, versus what's happening in those buildings now is no monitoring. So my question is, the piece that would probably, in those situations where the city would be most immediately interfacing with would be our first responders and our police. Are they going to have a place at the table as a stakeholder to talk about the considerations that they need for a potential building site?
Yeah, absolutely. So in every community, we are working on what we refer to as a good neighbor agreement. And good neighbor goes both ways, right? We want the community to be good neighbors to their new neighbors that are moving in. And we want to make sure that the new neighbors moving into these buildings are good neighbors to the community. And so when we do that good neighbor agreement process that the provider will really drive, they're the ones that are expert in really making sure that they're holding these relationships in the community, we would want to work with the city to identify who are the different folks in your community that should have a seat at the table, that should be informing the ongoing operations. And I would expect that those first responders would absolutely be part of that.
Okay, okay. So that's, that's one of my questions. The, the one piece, the one piece that I also that I think about with hotels is that they come with parking. And a lot of the homeless population are living out of their cars. And so there, there will be places for their, them to park their vehicles. I, I am hopeful that wherever you choose, across King County, transit connections are also, like within a quarter mile of easy walking to a, a transit would also be an option. But in the conversation of parking, do you anticipate allowing overnight parking for homeless people in those parking lots, whether they're RVs or, or homes? Because I know that there are some homeless shelters that do allow overnight parking for people who aren't living within the building, but are allowed to use the parking. Do you anticipate that being part of your plan?
Yeah, so the properties that we are acquiring will only be serving the folks that are moving into the building.
Okay, that would be management easier, I would think. Yeah. And let's see. Oh, what is the chance? Thank you for also prioritizing landlords because it's become a very complicated, difficult issue on all levels and helping them stay, stay solvent and keep their nose above water as well. What, has there been any discussions with the cities that you've worked with thus far about prioritizing their local residents when they become homeless? And is that something that you have already put into place, you know, a mechanism for, like on your waitlist or what, what is happening with that?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We are working right now on how to actualize that exact thing. So the state legislature does require us to prioritize fifteen percent of the building for the local population. We are trying really hard to make sure that we're not just looking at the statute language and doing exactly what it says, but we're trying to live out the commitment that we've made in our agreement to that language with the legislature, as well as what we know local communities are really looking for. And that is the fact that when somebody is homeless in your community, it makes a lot of sense for them to be able to be housed in your community. They are, they have connections with friends or family in that community. They are used to relying on services in that community. They may be going to a faith community or other types of cultural community connections in, in that community. And so we do really want to work with each city to be able to figure out how to do these local referrals in a way that makes sense. As I mentioned, the service providers that we are looking to contract with, one of them is Outreach. And so we are looking at ways that we can deploy more outreach into the community to identify folks that are in these local communities and make sure that they have access to Health Through Housing buildings. Ultimately, we will be using what we refer to as our coordinated entry for all system to be able to identify the folks that move into these buildings, including that local referral factor. And that is because, remember, our Health Through Housing initiative serves folks that are experiencing chronic homelessness in a very specific definition that goes with it. So we'll be looking to align that definition with the local referral and make sure that the folks that need the housing the most are able to get in there.
Okay, so another question. Do these, are these universally individuals? How many of these are families that are chronically homeless?
Yeah, so we do have chronically homeless families across the region. I want to say at last I checked, it was a, it was less than a thousand. I want to say it was closer to four hundred that are across the region. In contrast, I think we have about three to four thousand single adults that are experiencing homelessness. And so when we look at the stock of hotels that this specific opportunity is primed for, we know that these are very small units. They're really what will appear to be studios for all intents and purposes. And they're really gonna be best laid out to be able to serve single adults and couples.
Okay.
And so while we do have needs for chronic homeless families across the region, the disproportionate scale of the need is for single adults and that's who we'll be serving.
Okay. Now, you know, when you said four hundred, about four hundred, is that four hundred families or four hundred people that are in families?
I, I should be careful with my data. I think it's about four hundred families.
Okay, all right. That's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for coming. Actually, you didn't present. I shouldn't say the same thing every time because it's not always that. Thank you for coming to answer questions. There's a kind of a list of qualifications with, you know, income at zero to thirty percent of the area median and experiencing or at risk of chronic homelessness and a list of kind of qualifications. And one of those qualifications is people who are homeless or at risk of being homeless. Can you talk about kind of how those qualifications fit in and how those are used?
Yeah, so there's two different layers of requirements that the county is working with. One comes from the state. The state set requirements overall on the revenue source that we are using here, which is a one-tenth of one percent sales tax. And that requires that the funding generally be used for affordable housing and behavioral health facilities and then sets out several different types of populations that can be served, including seniors, veterans, older adults, I already said seniors, sorry, I'm trying to do this off the cuff, people experiencing or at risk of homelessness, as you said, and people with disabilities and people with behavioral health disabilities. King County then put in place our own code that further refines that population to be a little bit more specific. And so when it comes to the King County Health Through Housing program, we are serving folks who are at zero to thirty percent area median income and who are experiencing chronic homelessness. So they have to be both, by and large, folks that are experiencing chronic homelessness are earning zero to thirty percent area median income. So that usually kind of fits together. The folks that are chronically homeless have disabilities. And so therefore, they match with that state requirement around serving folks with disabilities and behavioral health disabilities. We know that many folks that are chronically homeless, as I think I've probably said, are veterans and are seniors. So there's kind of a few different of those buckets from the state legislature that will be fulfilling. But we've kind of narrowed it down to really focus in, as I've said, on that single adult chronic homelessness population.
Fantastic. That's awesome. I read that list of folks and I think there's a domestic violence survivors are on there as well. And I just can't think of a grouping of people that I think it's more important that we help. I mean, you know, these are, these are the folks in our community that need it the most. The, I think it was, you mentioned the University of Washington study. That's the study that came out earlier this week, talking about this. That wasn't even permanent supportive housing?
Yeah, so I want to be careful about which report you're referencing. There was a University of Washington study that came out last fall.
Okay.
Possibly the one that you're referring to?
No, there was something that came out earlier this week that was, that had talked about, I guess, some early returns. Are you familiar with that? I don't have it in front of me or I'd list it.
I'm trying to do a quick Google search to see what else it might have been referring to. I can tell that the University of Washington did do a study on our shelter de-intensification program. Find that the, the shelter de-intensification we provided, which was an emergency shelter and not long-term housing where folks had permanent units over time in a lease, did find that we had increased exits to housing, reduced emergency response and things like that.
Okay. And you can tell her, we'll get her, we'll get you back to her soon. The other question is, you know, our decision tonight is to talk about whether or not we want to just have you guys look in Bothell. Can you talk about what kind of benefit it gives to the overall program to be able to look in more cities?
Thank you, Councilmember. So our goal here is to make sure that we have a truly regional program. Traditionally, permanent supportive housing has been constructed and placed in the city of Seattle for a long time. We've got a few buildings that have been placed in South King County. The city of Kent recently had a building open that Catholic Community Services operates. And the first permanent supportive housing building that so far has been approved will be in Bellevue. And that's not due to open here for another year or two. Some folks on this line probably know the answer better than I do. And so that's really the first permanent supportive housing that we've had really in the North and East Region. We at King County have heard for a while, frankly, from South King County cities that are concerned about the affordable housing that their region has and that they want to make sure that as King County invests our dollars, we are making this truly regional. If folks would like, I'd be happy to share a map this evening that shows where we've scattered these units so far. We've got several buildings that are in the city of Seattle. We've got one in the city of Renton, the city of Auburn, the city of Federal Way, and then the city of Redmond. So we would love to make sure as we go forward and we continue talking with communities that we can show that we are serving folks that are in northeast, south King County as well as Seattle and making this a truly regional program.
Awesome. That's phenomenal. In minor four and six, so don't stress, please. I know how it is. The, just some general comments. I, I think this is a phenomenal program and I'm so excited that we can do this and we can provide the support to the people in our community who need it the most. I also think the decision before us tonight is a no-brainer. I think it's important to be a good regional partner to other jurisdictions in the region that have been doing work on this for a while. And it's, it's important that we pull our weight. I also think that having something in Bothell would be a great way to serve our own Bothell community and people that are here and experiencing homelessness here. So they can be closer to their families, so they can be closer to their friends and support structures as well. So it seems to me to be the right thing to do for our own community as well as just to be a better partner in the region. Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew?
Thank you very much for the information that you just gave us and I'm in full support of it. I have one question, though. Is there any point in time where you're gonna have, I, let's say, training for some of these people to help get them back on their feet? I, whether it's computer programming or how to be an electrician or something along those lines?
Yeah, so as part of the comprehensive services that we provide in buildings, employment services is absolutely part of that. There'll be some of that employment services that our service providers can provide. I am sure that some of them will need to rely on other types of employment supports and being able to connect folks with education. We've actually connected with some job training down near our Auburn site where folks are really excited to be able to have some partnership there. And so as we move forward, we'll continue looking for those localized partnerships where there might be job training, folks that are there in the community or nearby that we can be able to connect folks with. Where folks can have employment as one of their future opportunities, whether they have disabilities or not, we are absolutely gonna be able to support that and be able to help make sure every individual is reaching their full potential.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, man. I didn't know, I didn't know if I was too hard to see me there. Thank you, interim city manager, Lainhart, for the presentation. And Kelly, it's always great to see you. We got a dog barking and it's not mine, I can assure you, because I don't have one. But it's, it's great to see you, Kelly. And it's always amazing to see the work that, that the county is doing regionally to work through the homelessness issues that we have regionally here. I have a couple of questions, a couple of clarifying questions, some of the things that I've heard tonight. One of which is amazing, three days, one year. Can, can you tell, can you, to speak a little bit to that, what that actual cost is, three days, one year? What, what that actually means? Because that's pretty cool.
Yeah, maybe somebody else can help me with the calculator. I don't have that all broken down. I can tell you that the model that we've proposed to the Regional Policy Committee and the council does estimate the services at about twenty-five thousand dollars per unit per year. So I guess that would translate into about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars for three, three days at Harborview or three months at the King County Jail. We are, I will say, trying to bump up the amount that we are supporting these providers. One, we are asking that the Health Through Housing buildings have the most robust services that we have traditionally had in our permanent supportive housing. And two, I don't know if folks here have been watching the media lately. We know that our nonprofits are really struggling with attracting and retaining workers. And part of that is the salaries that we're able to provide for. So we are trying to make sure that we are really robustly funding the buildings, both for the good of the workforce as well as for the good of the residents.
Yeah, that's amazing. Twenty-five, twenty-five thousand is the number that sticks in my head and resonates. Can, you, you brought up neighbors moving in. Can you explain what that means, being a good neighbor, neighbors moving into a community? Some, some would think that we're inviting homelessness within our community. So can you explain what that, what that really means so that we're not, we're not giving a message that we're, we're, we're gonna be servicing or having members come into our community that aren't typically in our community already?
Thank you. Thank you, council member. It's a good question. I appreciate the, the frame. The folks that we are moving into our Health Through Housing Buildings are experiencing homelessness throughout the region. And as I said, we will be prioritizing folks that are really localized in the cities that we are having Health Through Housing Buildings in. What we know is that when someone experiences homelessness, they started somewhere and they were struggling to stay housed, and then they went in search of services or in search of connections somewhere across the region. So we know that folks that originally lived in Bothell and originally lived in North King County are homeless across our region. And we know that there are folks that are currently experiencing homelessness and in North King County and in Bothell. And so we're going to try to make sure that we give folks the best match that we can for housing that's going to help them be successful. And just as I moved into my home and I wanted to make sure that the neighbors around me were going to be friendly to me when I was walking down the street, and I try to be friendly to them. That's the kind of environment that we want to promote for these folks that have really had a hard time, right? If you were homeless for a year or more, it's a really hard thing to imagine, the type of trauma that you would experience. And we want to make sure that as they move into their new home, and when that's in Bothell, or when that's in any city that's citing one of these buildings, that they feel supported and that the community also knows that the operators and the building is going to be there to make sure that it is a successful building for the entire community.
Thank you. And can you speak a little bit to maybe who owns the facilities? How long do the facilities actually take to get up and running? I think you mentioned that it's been since last fall that the program started. So there may not be a facility that's actually physically up and running yet, but can you just speak a little bit to the, the time duration of that?
Yeah, thank you, council member. We are working to get these buildings online as quickly as possible. The first step was to get the revenue to be able to go out and acquire them. The second step was to go out and acquire them. And now we are at the stage where we are trying to contract for the service providers, get the workforce trained, and get residents moved in as quickly as possible. Winter is coming, so to speak, and we know that folks are going to need this stable housing then more than ever. It is going to take a few months. So we are looking at kind of end of the year, beginning of the year, depending on the building and kind of our phases. Obviously, any building that we'd be talking about in the city of Bothell would be a little bit behind some of the nine buildings that we've already purchased. But a few months to be able to kind of go through that contracting process, make sure that the service provider is able to fully train and hire their staff to be successful, and then be able to lease up as quickly as possible. I feel like there was another portion of your question, council member, that I might not have addressed.
Who's the actual ownership? Who owns the, the facilities?
Thank you. So King County is the owner of the building. That is a different arrangement, I will say, than we have traditionally had. Traditionally, the nonprofits and the service providers own the building. So we will be continuing to talk with the service providers, with the county council, who ultimately has the authority over our real estate, about whether King County ownership makes the most sense or whether the service provider and operator ownership makes the most sense. But for the foreseeable future and in partnership with decisions that we want to make in partnership with the city of Bothell, King County is the owner.
Fabulous. And then the community engagement piece is, is actually a really big piece, especially here in Bothell, around the region for that matter. But we often hear about how do we engage with our community more and ensure that our community understands the decisions that we're making on council and as a city? And moving this forward, if we were to move this forward tonight, what, how would you envision the city of Bothell engaging with its community on this process?
Yeah, great. Thanks, council member. The ways that we have traditionally engaged in communities for the other sites that we have has been to work closely with each community and each jurisdiction leadership to identify who in the community needs to be part of the discussions. So in many communities, we have made phone calls to nearby neighbors. We have even dropped flyers to nearby neighbors to notify them. We've coordinated co-hosting community meetings, sometimes small meetings with the business community, sometimes larger community meetings. And so, you know, King County is a big regional government. We don't know your community as well as you know your community. We would really hope to take the lead from you all in understanding who in your community needs to be informed, who needs to be at the table as we are making decisions and being able to set this up for success. So I know that that's kind of vague, but all to say that across our Health Through Housing portfolios, we have really tried hard to make sure that we are informing and answering questions and continuing discussions with the community all along the way.
Thank you. That's kind of what I was expecting to hear. And, and I, I'm just super energized and, and excited about this opportunity. I will tell you that I think it's vitally important. And I know you hear me say this often, but it's vitally important that we reach out within our community and understand and have the people sitting at the table that are within our community. That's the public safety personnel that are within our community, that school, understanding of teachers, needs of teachers, understanding superintendents, needs, things like that. That's, it's talking to business owners within the community to see how things are going to affect business owners. So as we move forward, we want to make sure that we are doing those things to engage, that we can understand that a positive doesn't turn into a negative. So that, that we're trying to, you know, create a, an opportunity for a need within our community, but we don't adversely create something that's a disadvantage for other part of our community. So I'm super excited, and, and I can't stress enough how excited I am that you're here tonight talking to us about this. We've been hearing about this for, for quite some time at RPC. I've had the opportunity to give a, a little bit of a committee update on this stuff, but to have you here is, is amazing. I can't stress it enough. I know, talking to leaders around the region, and Kelly, you've heard me say this as well, there's different type of homelessness around our region. And we must work together to solve all types at the same time. We don't want to solve one because one can lead to another. So we, you know, as long as this program is looking at all aspects. I know we talked about the, you know, you talk about the, the thirty percent median and the chronicle homelessness piece, but, you know, we may have kids that are, you know, aging out of foster care that may need help as well. So then we talk about the services that this potentially can offer for us in our community. This council just recently, in the past, has talked about mental health, social services, youth services. So this gives us an opportunity. So I'm hopeful that if this moves forward, that we're going to use this as a huge advantage, not just for solving homelessness, but getting other social and mental services needs for our community. Thank you.
That was a great discussion tonight. Thank you, all of the council members. All of my questions were answered. At the start of the evening, at the start of the presentation, I was already supportive of this discussion that we're having tonight. But as the discussion progressed, just my support increased and grew even more with just all the information on all the questions that were asked. And Kelly, you did a great job. I, I know we threw the kitchen sink at you tonight, and you hit it out of the park. So thank you for indulging us with all the questions and giving us all the answers that you had. I'll go to councilmember Doer.
Yeah, I moved to approve the proposed resolution to support Health Through Housing.
And councilmember Agnew?
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion by councilmember Doer to approve the proposed resolution to support Health Through Housing with the second by councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, city clerk?
You say yes or no when I call your name? Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Door?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
House of Seven Zero.
Great. Thank you, everyone. And so another step in this journey along the way. And so, you know, this, this just starts the work for Kelly and King County and everything. So we'll wait to hear back and see what their search yields. And look forward to seeing you back sometime soon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We will definitely be reporting back to Aaron as things proceed and make sure that we are working closely with all of you. I hope that this is just the beginning of our continued partnership together. As councilmember McNeil said, there's a lot more work to do. So thank you all for your time.
Thanks. Have a great night.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right, well, let's take a ten-minute break, and then we'll come back with AB 21-133. So let's come back at eight-ten.
Recording stopped.
Welcome back. We will get started with.
Recording in progress.
We will get started with AB 21-133, consideration of issuing a public area use permit to Neutron Holdings. Does business as Lime Scooters. And we'll start out with our Development Manager, Economic Development Manager, Jeanie Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. So this is in reference to page 269 of your council packet. And I'm here this evening to ask you to approve a public area use permit for Lime Scooters. This is, this permit package is substantially the same as what you have approved before in the past. The only difference is, is that Lime Scooter will be paying a 10 cent per rider fee versus previous 15%. And that is my presentation. I am happy to take questions. And I do believe that Lisa Brenner, who is our Lime Senior Operations Manager, is online and available for questions if you have any.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
It's really a no-brainer, but I do have to ask, for campus and then heavily trafficked pedestrian areas like downtown, are, is there going to be anything in place that slows down the speed of these Lime Scooters? Or is that something that we're going to have to watch and monitor?
I've asked Lime Scooter to put a geofence around the Main Street where it is currently closed. And any other recommendations, I will be happy to take right now. But as of right now, it's a wait and see. What happens?
I'm happy with wait and see. I'm just glad they're coming back. Thank you.
Not seeing a lot of questions here. Councilmember Thompson.
I don't have any questions. I too am just excited they're coming back.
They are a great solution for that final mile, last, last mile micro mobility. Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeanie, when you say that you put a geofence around Main Street, is that, is that meant to keep them off of Main Street?
It will keep them completely off Main Street. My, my thought process was is because you have people sitting on Main Street dining and walking more openly in Main Street and on the sidewalks, that it would be best not to have any scooter traffic unless they were being walked.
I've just seen so many people enjoying Main Street on the scooters. Anyway, I'm in favor of having the scooters back. And thanks staff for making that happen.
Councilmember McAuliffe, I think I saw your card.
Yes, you did. And I just want to thank you also, because I think it's important. And you did say, Jeanie, they can walk them through Main Street, correct?
That's correct.
I think that's important, is that they can enjoy them all around it. But when it comes to Main Street itself, and the people are sitting and eating and walking, it's nice that they can walk them. So with that, I'd like to approve the use of a public area use permit to have our e-scooters back in town. Our companies back in town. I make that motion.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember McAuliffe to approve the use of a public area use permit to contract with e-scooter companies with a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion? Councilmember Doer.
I wanted to briefly give a shout out to Councilmember Thompson, who brought it up in council conversations a little bit ago. And I think he contacted Lime Scooter and he, he kind of worked behind the scenes. So I just want to give him a little bit of credit here, too.
All right, seeing no further discussion, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, everyone. Onto AB 21-134, consideration of designating a portion of Northeast 188th Street as Veterans Memorial Drive. And so I will call on to our interim Public Works Director, Jaclyn Brandon.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me share my screen and I will get started. Can you see that?
Yep.
Yeah. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. I have a very short presentation for you tonight to consider the designation of a portion of Northeast 188th Street as Veterans Memorial Drive. This is located on page 287 of your agenda packet. All right. In June, two of our community members, Jim and Pearl, attended a council meeting to speak during visitor comment. In recent years, they both worked with North Shore School District to establish the North Shore Veterans Memorial, which was dedicated in 2019 and is located at Popkiny Stadium. The memorial honors North Shore students who gave their lives serving the United States military and all who served courageously to protect our country. In their visitor comment, they requested council to consider renaming a portion of Northeast 188th Street as Veterans Memorial Drive, as well as to install directional arrow signs directing folks to the memorial. Staff went to work to coordinate with Jim and Pearl and develop the proposal for you tonight, which includes quotes for signage and placement of those signs. Here you will see a map that shows with a red line there, the location on Northeast 188th Street between Bothell Way Northeast and 92nd Avenue Northeast. So this portion of Northeast 188th runs along Popkiny Stadium and the entrance where the Veterans Memorial is located. And then you can also see to the right a picture. As that was a result of a similar process, the city went through to designate Northeast 188th Street as the honorary name Cougar Way. So with council approval tonight, staff will install honorary street name directional sign lanes on existing street clothes. And that's the example you see in the top right there, as well as directional arrow signs leading to the memorial site. And you see the example there in the bottom left. There is also a map of these proposed locations on page 291 of your agenda packet. With that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Agnew.
I don't have a lot of questions. I just want to thank you very much for your presentation. I want to thank you, the city, for, for making this happen. And it's kind of appropriate today because I just found out a friend of mine just passed that I was in the service with, who is a veteran. I, I think it helps the city identify some of the soldiers and sailors and airmen and Coast Guard that gave, gave all to their country. I think we should always remember their sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for your loss.
Councilmember Doer.
I just wanted to thank staff. I think this is an example of how council conversations really gives the council a little bit of leeway in terms of addressing small things that mean a lot to the community. And I really am very grateful for staff's responsiveness. So thank you, Jaclyn, and everyone who was involved in making this happen.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to say thank to staff for making this happen. Just want to also thank Jim and Pearl for coming to us and bringing this to our attention, being the champions for this idea and working with staff to bring this idea to fruition. So, uh, community action at its best.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Agnew. You're on mute still?
Well, good, then you missed me messing up in the beginning. I recommend that we approve the designation of portion of 188th between Bothell Way and 92nd Avenue as Veterans Memorial Drive and the sign installation is proposed by staff.
Councilmember Doer.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Agnew to approve the designation of a portion of Northeast 188th Street as Veterans Memorial Drive and the sign installation is proposed by staff with a second by Councilmember Doer. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none. City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zornz. You're on mute, Deputy Mayor Zornz. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jaclyn.
Thank you.
All right, on to AB 21-135. Uh, consideration of extending the temporary Main Street closure until January 1st, 2022. And I will turn it over to our interim Assistant City Manager, Becky Range.
Hi, thank you so much for having me tonight, Mayor, Councilmembers. Give me just a moment to share my screen. All right, are you able to see the screen? All right, so it's always rough being the last agenda item on a very busy night and also being such an important thing for us to discuss. But that's okay. We'll get through it. I wanted to say just a couple of things. I think that it's important for us as city staff and council members to have good productive conversations about issues in our community. And we've already had a lot of conversations about this. And I'm so happy about that. I'm happy that we're able to have conversations and try to work through solutions and get our community exactly what they need. So we're going to talk tonight about the Main Street temporary closure. I want to go over just a quick background and bring everyone up to speed about what we're talking about. Talk about the current situation. We'll talk about exploring temporary closures and permanent closures and talk about next steps. And one of the things I want to mention is that you, you might be wondering why I'm presenting tonight. I'm clearly new to the city of Bothell. And I think I was asked to help facilitate this discussion because I am a bit of a neutral party. I wasn't here when the downtown planning was done. I wasn't here when the Main Street project was done. And so when I first started meeting with staff about this topic, I said, let's be really open-minded about this. And let's really think about what's best for our community and what we should do to get them what they need. Just a real quick background, I know that every one of you know the last 18 months or so have been pretty rough. But just some reminders, in 2020, we did start the temporary closure of Main Street around June to help support our local businesses as they were facing some public health capacity limits. We then extended that closure until full capacity of the restaurants resumed in October of 2020. In 2021, we also discussed the closure. And we just really weren't quite certain what would happen with COVID at that time. So we extended the closure again through the summer until October. In June of 2021, just this summer, just a reminder that businesses did resume full capacity, although they still do need some support as they face economic hardships from COVID. So it was our expectation that maybe in the fall of 2021, maybe in September or October, we would return to some type of normalcy. Well, that didn't happen. Delta had other plans for us. And so across the region, we saw that companies and cities delay their reopening plans until we have some more certainty on what will be the situation with COVID. So right now, as we interact with our neighboring cities across the region, we do know many cities have opted to remain in virtual meeting status until early 2022. Many of our companies have decided not to reopen as they expected. Transit service has not resumed full levels quite yet. Our North Shore School District here and the surrounding Bothell area did resume their in-person classes starting September 1st. UW Bothell, they are starting back their fall quarter, September 29th, and will be at about 76% of their in-person classes. Cascadia College will resume about 43% of their classes will be in person starting September 29th. And just a few days ago, Metro announced that they're going to be resuming some of their routes, October 3rd. I don't actually have details on that yet. So when we think about what to expect and plan for, for early 2022, gosh, you know, we really just don't know. Some of the companies expect to open, as I mentioned, early 2022. For us, we do know that we'll have some construction starting on our new fire station downtown, Station 42. We also know that we have a construction project on Main Street in between 102nd, 103rd that is expected to start in February and last about 30 days. So as we think about this topic for our community, one of the things that we want to talk about is how excited and how many people in our community, they love this temporary closure of Main Street. We've talked to lots of people, we have heard from many people in our community, they love walking around Main Street. It's a nice, a nice safe pedestrian refuge for them. They're able to have a gathering place, they're able to pop in and out of restaurants and businesses. Most of our Main Street businesses support this closure. It's helpful for them. Even though they are at full capacity now, they're still impacted by COVID. So a lot of really positive comments about this temporary closure. City staff has discussed the temporary closure. And at this time, we do recommend maybe intermittent or seasonal closures of Main Street for now due to a couple of different issues. One of those issues, and I believe we've talked about this before in council meetings, our first responders are a little bit concerned with emergency access to Main Street. Our fire department has talked a little bit about this. You know, the way that Main Street was designed, it wasn't designed to be closed permanently. So there are just a few concerns there that they would be able to access either residents or patients that need care or access the buildings. Many things that staff has talked about, we are concerned a little bit about traffic circulation and impacts to transit. I want to mention that a lot of downtown planning was done. Like I said, this was before I arrived. But we had a very, very robust downtown planning process from but we had a very, very robust downtown planning process from 2006 to 2009. I'm sure maybe some people watching tonight were a part of that. It was an exciting process. There were lots of meetings, lots of discussion about what our downtown could and should be. There were a lot of projects envisioned for that. Many of those projects have been completed. One of the main projects of this downtown plan was the Main Street Enhancement Project. Just that project alone was over $7 million, and that project was funded largely in part to grant funds. And we had some robust discussions earlier today about Main Street and how we might deal with this. And after the meetings that we had today, I do want to make council aware, we received an email from WashDOT regarding some federal funds that we use to fund this Main Street Enhancement Project. And the reason why I want to share that information with you, we were actually asked some time ago to research that if those grant funds would have to be repaid at all if we did a permanent closure of Main Street. And really, just an hour or two before this meeting, we received an email from WashDOT that said that yes, we would be expected to repay some of those funds. And this is really new information. There are people on the call tonight that can probably give more details if asked, but it's a significant amount of money, and it would be prorated, and it could range anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million that we would need to pay back for a permanent closure of Main Street. So, I only wanted to list the completed projects that staff has done as they implemented the downtown plan, just so we can kind of understand the investments and the planning and the work that's gone into delivering this downtown that we planned for so long ago. Many of these projects were done and designed with Main Street in mind that is a traffic thoroughfare. And staff can give you a lot more details than I can. There's just a lot of specific things. It gives staff a little bit of anxiety to think about changing street plans when there's already been quite a few projects done. You know, for example, when the multiway boulevard was planned, there was deliberate thought about turning lanes and how those would be designed and constructed based on the street grid in downtown Bothell. So, there's some things to think about to give you a staff perspective. The downtown plan was actually based on this street grid system that we all know and love today. On this slide, I just wanted to show you, again, I'm not a traffic expert, but I just wanted to illustrate to you how the street grid system works. These north-south roads in blue and the west-east roads in green, when you talk to our traffic experts, they'll tell you, "We have really kind of a small downtown, and we have very short blocks." So, when we do something in one particular area, it really impacts another area or another intersection of our downtown. When they did the downtown planning, there's really a lot of thought put into pedestrian character, safety, and comfort of pedestrians as they're walking around our downtown. And at the same time, transit and emergency operations are still really, really important when we think about our downtown street grid. This is kind of a simple illustration, but as not everyone in the community is maybe aware of how the traffic is on these streets downtown, we just wanted to give some examples and a little bit of data. If council would like any more in-depth traffic circulation data or anything like that, we'd be happy to have an expert come back and brief you. But one of the data points that's important for us to think about is the average daily trip estimates. So, if you think about Main Street being one of only two roads that runs west to east through our downtown, and on non-summer, non-holidays, our average daily trip estimate is about 6,000 to 7,000 cars a day. Now, of course, that's also non-COVID times, and we don't know what's going to happen after COVID. About that same amount of traffic also travels west to east, east to west on Northeast 185th Street. So, roughly estimates about the same amount of traffic on both streets. Our traffic experts and our staff have thought about what happens when we do close Main Street. It's difficult for us to tell right now because we don't have traffic levels resumed to any kind of normal level. But, but one of the things they do want to caution city council about and our community about is that when we close this section of Main Street, what we know will happen and we fully expect will have impacts once traffic resumes to normal levels, is that these cars, they won't probably opt to travel much on Northeast 183rd because it's not a through street. Much of those cars will move up to 185th. And we have a few concerns about that. We have already made plans to move our transit to 185th. If more traffic moves from Main Street up to 185th, we can't say with certainty that 185th is designed to be able to accommodate that traffic. We're not really sure what's going to happen. We don't know exactly where the cars will go, but we do have some real concerns with that. It may be things that we can overcome, but with the amount of transit traffic that will eventually be on Northeast 185th and increased vehicles and buses there, we're concerned about congestion in that area. And there are some other concerns as well. Our police department is located right there on that road, and we are a little bit concerned about their ability to exit their building when they go on calls. I'd just like to show this slide because one of our staffers shared it with me. So, when we think about the planning and the work and the improvements that have to be done along 185th Street, this is just a slide that shows the three different transit agencies that had to be coordinated with to be able to run transit on Northeast 185th. So, a lot of work that goes into that, that's going to be a lot of traffic on 185th. So, something for us to think about. So, there were a lot of projects for the downtown plan that have already been completed, but that doesn't mean that we might not change from our downtown plan or vision. It was done quite some time ago. It's been more than 10 years. So, what we wanted to do is just talk a little bit about some of the projects that are planned and some of the improvements that are planned, just so we can kind of think through some of those. Of course, we do have the fire station project that I mentioned earlier. We do have this Main Street construction expected to happen around February between 102nd and 103rd, which will impact traffic in that area. Two of the items that I wanted to mention, it was just interesting to me when staff mentioned this, on 185th, there's already plans in the works to do things there to accommodate transit and the new BRT system that will be coming in soon. So, Sound Transit coordinated with us closely, and they're actually paying for these, but there's already plans for a signal to be installed at that 104th, 185th intersection. There's also right-turn pockets, right-turn lanes that are planned for 185th and 104th, and those are planned to meet kind of the current traffic grid as we see it being used. And of course, we had some really exciting news this week that our block the sold. So, that was very exciting news. So, the large property at the northwest corner of 522 and Bothell Way, that construction project will be starting soon. And the only reason why I want to mention that project, that project has an associated construction project with it. It's the Main Street Extension. So, when the original downtown plan was done, the whole thought was that Main Street would be extended and straightened and go all the way through. So, that project is still planned to be done and should be starting soon. A couple of other big projects for our team, the Beardsley Widening Boulevard should happen between 25 and 27, and Bothell Way Widening hopefully will happen between 26 and 27. So, just some large projects, just so you know that if, when we make decisions to change anything, if we do make decisions, we just need to think about projects that might need to be altered or halted or changed a little bit. This is just a representation of that project in February that will start in 2022, just to show you there on the right side how that road could be closed between 102nd and 103rd. So, one of the things that we wanted to talk about with council is that when we talk about decisions, a policy decision such as this, it's really important for us to consider all stakeholders that are impacted by our decision-making. And we know that many people in the community support a permanent Main Street closure, support long-term temporary closures of Main Street. For us as city staff, we also want to make sure that we are getting input from stakeholders who maybe aren't already engaged with us. We want to know what impact would this have to our U-Dub Bothell students and staff, our Cascadia students and staff? What about our transit partners and our transit users? Like, how would they be impacted by any changes we might make? We'd also like to learn a little bit more from more businesses throughout downtown, and we do know that there are some businesses on Main Street that do not support a permanent closure of Main Street for a variety of reasons. So, just some things for us to think through. Another issue that we just want to educate everyone a little bit about is that we have some concerns about a permanent closure of a street that's such a main public thoroughfare. So, for us as city staffers, we believe we are stewards of our community's funds and their public property and their assets. And so, for us, we just want to be mindful of that, and we want to think about what precedent that might set if we essentially allow the loss of a public thoroughfare. And public right-of-way is very important to some people in our community, and they do want it to be protected. So, those are just some issues we want to think through. So, with all that being said, I just want to express to council that we want to work with you to come up with some solutions for how we should handle our Main Street in downtown. We don't necessarily have to make a decision tonight. You had asked us many months ago to come back this fall and talk more about other opportunities for public gathering, for recreation and events. So, next week, we'll actually be coming back to talk to you about the Town Square, Festival Street, and the multiway boulevards, other opportunities across downtown where we could have programming and events. I will say, the COVID uncertainties, it does make decision-making very difficult. We, we aren't really quite sure what's going to happen in January, February, March. But the current temporary closure that you have in place does expire October 3rd. Something else we can do, if you are interested in more traffic data or learning more about impacts to transit, we're happy to come and talk to you about that. We're happy to talk to you more about traffic studies. That would give us a little bit more information about what the impacts might be or might not be. So, those are all different things that could be our next steps. With that, do you have any questions for me?
Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Becky, for coming and presenting to us. I do have a couple of questions. You've brought us a lot of concerns about this. One of them, which is very important, is public safety access. What sort of solutions have we explored to give public safety access temporarily? Removable bollards, something like that?
Yes, we, we actually have been researching quite a bit to bring back to you as part of the budget process. Hold on, I'm trying to make sure that I have stopped sharing my screen. Yes, and we do have a lot more information to share with you about that because an important part of being able to have flexible closures of different areas around downtown would be to be able to do, to close the streets quickly, easily with not a lot of manpower. So, we'll be bringing some more data back to you soon on that.
Okay, great. So, I mean, it sounds like what you just said, it would be quick and easy to change that up. So, if public safety needed to access that moving forward, there would be a very simple way to do it permanently so that public safety could still access it regularly. So, thank you. Next question, could you bring up the downtown map that you brought up in the presentation?
Sure. With just the street grid?
Yeah.
The, yeah, hold on. There we go. Do you see that?
Um, no. Oh, there we go. Yeah, I, um, so we have those kind of two thoroughfares that you mentioned is a really, you know, important thing through town. When we get just east of town, what happens to those two roads?
When we get east of town?
Yeah, a little bit toward the school.
Uh, I'm not really sure. I think there's a couple of folks on that might be able to answer that question.
Well, it looks to me like they merge into one.
Oh, are you talking about actually on the screen where they merged?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, I mean.
About the intersection of 185th and Beardsley?
Yeah, so, I mean, functionally, we have one street to get all the way through town that two happened to run in and turn into one. I guess I just don't understand how closing Main Street would lower that capacity if we've got a bottleneck like a block away.
Yeah, and that's a great question, council member, and I am, I know me as a traffic expert, so I'll have to defer to the experts on that one.
Okay. The, you know, all of the predictions that, you, you mentioned traffic and congestion a lot. Do we have any data to back that up, or are we just assuming that that will be a problem?
You know, we, I think city staffers, it's our probably nature to be a little bit of, we're kind of the nervous Nellies. We try to plan for things. We don't like to be reactive. We, we do have some traffic estimates, and those are all things that were used when we were actually planning the streets and doing the plan. But you're right, I don't think we have, you know, hard numbers on anything.
Cool.
Yeah.
I, I really love our downtown, and I really, one of the things that's a priority to me and folks in the community that I talk to is making our downtown a really great place to arrive at, a really great place to be. And that kind of goes directly against making it a really great place to drive through. You know, who wants to sit and have lunch on an arterial, you know, right, right next to cars that are going quickly? I, I just think making our, you know, traditional downtown with our beautiful historic Main Street and prioritizing driving cars through it as efficiently as possible when there's, Highway 522 is right there. We've still got 185th going right through town. I just, I don't understand that being a priority at all. And in terms of traffic, you know, if you look at every, like, you know, Carmageddon, we talked about this, like, I don't know, like, 10 years ago in Seattle when they took some, you know, a pretty big highway out. There was one in LA a little while ago when everybody expects traffic to be terrible because a really big thoroughfare closes, and they never materialize. Traffic stays just about the same because people alter their behavior because they know that their context has changed around that. And I think that is a much better thing to expect coming out of closing Main Street down than some sort of like terrible thing where nobody will be able to drive through anymore. Because the amount of resources that you give to somebody directly affects how much demand there is for that, you know. But functionally, we don't have any idea what's going to happen with traffic, and I'd argue that our best guess is that it probably stays just about the same. But functionally, we don't have any idea what's going to happen with traffic, and I'd argue that our best guess is that it probably stays just about the same. And I understand, yeah, we had a, we had, we did a robust downtown plan fifteen years ago. Our job is to change the code for the better.
Right.
Like, we want to make the world a better place than it was fifteen years ago. And I want to make Bothwell a cooler place to hang out in than it was fifteen years ago. The other thing that I wrote down is, you know, we talk about a traffic study, and I feel like many times we have to do a study and it's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars is just sort of a smokescreen to not do something because we don't want to for some other reason. I mean, we have this, I mean, I mean, we had Main Street closed for a year and a half, and none of these dire predictions came true. And it's closed right now, and traffic and commuting times is just about what it was before the pandemic. And, and the thing is, is we can just leave it open. Like, we don't have to do a study. I would love, instead of closing it through the end of the year, to close it through the end of January, so we can find out if the construction is going to cause that traffic congestion. But even if it does, it's the construction causing the traffic congestion, not the fact that Main Street's been pedestrianized. So that's all I have to say. Thank you again for coming and chatting with us and presenting this to us. And I will let my fellow council members have a turn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Thanks, Becky, for that interesting, to say the least, studied being done on this. There, there were a couple of things that you said that grabbed my attention, and one is a million dollars we're going to have to pay back to the state. That grabbed my attention a lot. The seven thousand cars or sixty-five hundred cars that you are saying go through Main Street and have to go up to one hundred and eighty-fifth, that's going to be, that's going to be a huge issue because it's just going to put more traffic on there in that road to begin with. Public safety, I've been, I've been opposed to this closure for a long time, just for public safety. Now, that was the main reason. We get a working fire down there, they, they don't have access. They don't, you know, they're going to have to handjack all the lines and do all that kind of stuff, and that's just going to take more time away from putting the wet stuff on the red stuff. So I, I would not be opposed to us delaying our decision tonight and moving it forward a little bit to try to get more information. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I'm a little bit shocked by the Wash Dot thing, but I, I.
I am too.
It's unfortunate that, you know, that we didn't hear about it sooner, but I understand that we don't have control over that. But I don't think that should deter us from doing the right thing. Earlier in the year, when we talked about waiving, continuing to waive permit fees for businesses that have decided to use their parking lots and other spaces for seating. I think Director Bothwell came back and, and talked about something like a twenty percent increase from the beginning of COVID for having that extra space. And we don't know right now where things are headed, but we know they're just as bad as they were at the very worst part of the pandemic. We know that our hospitals are so full that in some cases they're triaging and they're making decisions on who gets treated and who doesn't. So I would like to keep the option of having outdoor spaces. For myself, I would even just like to, I'd like to go out, but I'm very wary of going to an indoor setting. And as I think many people should be, especially since we don't know about who's got, who's gotten vaccines and who hasn't. So, I mean, there are a couple of reasons why I'm very much in favor of maybe not deciding tonight to make it permanent, but certainly extending the timeline. I think Councilmember Thompson had a, had a great idea, why pay a hundred thousand dollars for a traffic study when we can kind of see what happens? It doesn't take a lot of time or work to remove those very beautifully designed and painted echo blocks. We can do that at any time, and so it doesn't seem like a, a big ask to wait till the end of January. So I'd be very much in favor of that. I, there are always pros and cons to any decision. I heard a fascinating definition this week on a podcast. Anxiety is the inability to make a decision because, and freedom is having to make decisions. And when I look at what the closure of Main Street has done for our community, it has brought so much joy to people in a time when there wasn't a lot of joy to be had. And it's, it's created a place for us to come together as a community and still have some contact when everybody was isolating. Oh, my gosh. It just, it brought so much joy seeing, you know, I walked by a couple of weeks ago and there were two dads with, with some of their kids playing football in the street while the rest of their families finished their dinners. I mean, we've always got a way how, what the pros and cons are of anything, and I, I would, I, I'm not ashamed to say, I still believe that we should close it permanently. I, I don't think cars should be the priority. I think it's lovely to have an area where people don't have to be afraid of, if they're crossing the street, if the car's going to stop. And I think that's the very least we could provide our community, but I'm willing to wait and not make that motion so the staff can have time to figure out how we might achieve that, whether it's movable ballards or whatever it is. I think there are solutions, and I'm willing to wait and see those proposals. But ultimately, I, I do believe it should be closed. I don't think it's in our best interest as a community to let the cars be the priority. And so I would agree with Councilmember Thompson about extending to the end of January and seeing about the, the traffic. And, you know, the Wash Dot thing, you know, we can also look at that. And maybe it's, I mean, how often does it have to be open for us to not have to worry about paying back the grant? I don't know, but we don't, we don't have any of those answers. And so I'm not willing to decide until we have more of those answers in the future. So I'm interested to see what my fellow council members have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really a difficult decision. First of all, right now with the current date of October third, I think we need to at least make some motion tonight to extend the time limit. I would, I would, I would not like to see it be January one, two thousand and twenty-two, because I think that that's just way too soon. We're not through this COVID yet, and we may not be for at least another year. And while our, you know, while hospitals are filling up and people are still getting sick, we need to assure that our businesses can be open to the public in an open-air situation. That's really critical right now. So my feeling is to at least extend it until the, the fear of COVID is gone and we can, and our restaurants and businesses can be at full capacity. I just don't want to just keep moving the ball down the road over and over again. I'm very concerned about doing that. It doesn't allow businesses to provide the heaters or lights or whatever they need in order for them to accommodate through the winter. And so month after month after month, they stand at a crossroads as to what they can do and can't do. And they can't spend money on the things they need. There is no sure, assured time. So I don't know the answer yet either. I think we need more more options that we could bring before the council to say maybe temporary closures, do certain hours or certain months of the year. We can look at this, but we've got to extend this farther than just a few months down the road.
And I should be clear, staff really does support intermittent seasonal closures for Main Street. They really do support that, but I appreciate all of your flexibility. It is really hard to make decisions not knowing what the COVID situation will be. And we do feel like sometimes we're just making decisions and, and baby steps, and it's, it's difficult.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. And Becky, thank you for the, the presentation. We've had a lot of conversations about Main Street, and thank you for the thoughtfulness and the, and taking us through all of the, the, the pros and cons of the long-term or short-term closure. Listening to the conversation tonight and hearing from my fellow council members, something that, that comes to mind is balance. And how are we, how are we balancing the needs across our community for all of our businesses? I, I get a sense that this is one, this is only one street within our community. It is our Main Street within our community. It is an important staple of our downtown core. But there's a lot of other businesses that are in our downtown, and, and what are we doing to support them during this COVID crisis? And how are we supporting them? So I'd, I'd love to get some information on how we're balancing not only the needs for the businesses and restaurants on Main Street, but those throughout our community. Not only those in downtown Bothwell, but we have businesses that are in the Canyon Park in the north end of our community. How are we supporting those within our community? When, when it comes to the Wash Dot and, and the new information that was just presented to us that we potentially have to pay a, a million, eight hundred thousand to a million dollars, that, that, that is just not being fiscally responsible. If we, if we do something to jeopardize that and have to pay that back, we are not being fiscally responsible. That's eight hundred thousand dollars that could go into other businesses across our region, into our community, to help homelessness, whatever, youth, social services, all the different things that we need. So I'm, I'm very keen to, to that, that dollar amount. But what I would like to hear is how? So if, if we close till January first, are we in jeopardy? If we close to the end of January, are, are we in jeopardy? What is, what, what identifies when we're going to be in, in potential jeopardy of having to pay them money back? What, what does that look like? So if we make a decision tonight and say we're going to close it till January first, and they say, no, you can only be closed to December fifteenth, what does that look like? So I, I mean, I'm not understanding that dynamic.
I, I don't think we have exact details yet, and I do apologize. We, we really did receive that information right before this meeting. And I'll let Jaclyn speak. I, I feel comfortable, after reading just the correspondence, that you could extend the temporary closure to the end of January, and there probably wouldn't be any more consequences. But Jaclyn, did you have anything else on that?
I agree with that. I think, I believe the trigger would be the permanent closure, but I was actually gonna punt it over to Steve Markawa and see if, if he can jump in and he has any different insight.
Sorry, playing with my buttons. I, I don't have any other insight. We have to pursue it further. Like Becky said, we just got that information. We've been pressing them for questions and everything. It's not a question that's often asked of federal highways through Wash Dot. So it had to go up the chain, and you can imagine how long that takes and come back down. I think the trigger is permanent. I, I suspect COVID, everybody's giving a lot of people leeway. And, but we can, we can certainly ask that question and kind of vet that out a little bit.
Okay, so when, maybe when, when you, you come back, so it sounds like we could extend to January with no issues, financial issues to the city. And then at that point, you, would that give you enough time to bring something back to us to, of what the, what that criteria would look like, and then what other opportunities we would, we would have?
I think so.
Okay, yeah, I just, I'm really concerned that we don't, I mean, this last-minute information, I, I didn't see anything about this in our package, so.
No, council member, it was not. And we, I, I was really struggling to process all of it, and I thought it's such a piece of important information to share tonight because it has been quite some time, and we've been soliciting input from them, and so it just happened to come in, actually, right before this meeting.
Okay, and I, and I don't, I don't, I don't fault you at all. I just.
Yeah.
This is, this is a major decision to make sure that we're not in jeopardy. So, you know, I just close with, you know, I support all of our businesses. Councilmember Doer brought up the fact that seeing, you know, dads or parents throwing footballs with their kids. I've been able to go down and frequent the restaurants down there, but I also frequent other restaurants around our community. And I think that what, what really resonates the most with me is a sense of community and being able to get out into the community. And I would love to see it, I would love to have the rest of our businesses, I'd love to have the rest of our community be able to enjoy different parts of our community and find balance, right? Because there's different pockets of our community that have different cultural-type stuff available to us. And if we can harness that and engage with those parts of our community, whether, you know, we do temporary closures on Main Street or longer term or whatever that looks like, I think we would, we would be losing an opportunity if we don't take this time to look at how it looks across our community while we're looking at this one street as alone. But I, I fully support our businesses and wanting to keep them open, but I support all of our businesses and want to keep them all open.
Deputy Mayor Zorance.
Well, I, I don't want to chew up more of the evening by reiterating what everyone said, because everyone brought up very good points. I do, I do worry about the fairness of, of making sure businesses all get not equal access, but equal opportunity to succeed. So that, that's something that I am concerned about. I will say, though, for campus traffic, we have two very, very expensive entrances. They're north and they're south. And so I, I have less sympathy for them being able to get on campus because they have great access off of five two two or coming off of, what is it, one ninety-fifth Beardsley Boulevard? That street's all well-paved and can handle that traffic. It's, I do question how much of that traffic actually benefits Main Street? If they were heavy users of Main Street to give business, I'd be like, oh, yeah, we need to, we need to cater for that piece of traffic. But the piece of traffic that I do worry about is one hundred and second feeding on and off of that. There is people who use that as a back road. And then there's also people who live on and around Norway Hill that need to be able to feed into downtown in Branchaw. So that piece of traffic concerns me. But, and then the mama bear in me is concerned about COVID, cold and flu season. So, Aaron, plug your ears. Thinking, why, why don't we keep it closed until, you know, vitamin D is back? And I'm thinking, you know, that's February or March. So, so if the bandwidth, I'm happy to go with whatever council and staff wants to do. If it's January, first of January, great. If it's the end of January, great. If you want to move it a, a month or two past that, because COVID's not going anywhere, I'm fine with that, too. So, but yes, options, I think we've got plenty of options, and I'm encouraged to hear all the thinking outside the box on how could we, how could we make everyone happy on this just a little bit? Thank you.
Well, I'll just say a few words, and then it looks like we have some more comments or discussion. So, yeah, so that, that news from Wash Dot, that is unfortunate that we didn't get more time to digest it. Pick, you know, try and ask some follow-up questions, dive into that a little bit more on how sensitive they are. But I, I think, as Steve said, I think there is definitely a lot of grace going around with COVID and. a lot of grace going around with COVID and um, it is a unusual question, so uh, probably not a lot of history or precedence on them to lean on uh, for for their response. So uh, definitely a bit of a challenge there. Uh, I do think um, end of January would probably be better. I think especially, you know, if we're trying to revisit it right during the holidays, uh, those are busy, challenging times. Uh, there's always uh, end of the year uh, closeout items that uh, make the council schedule uh, busy as well. So I think uh, trying to squeeze that in with everything else. And, you know, as as the deputy mayor said, with uh, just the cold indoor seasons, um, Delta may not be uh, lightening up all that soon. Uh, it it's hard to predict uh, as everything is right now. So uh, just the the flexibility that we have, I think, is is important. So as far as the, our consideration tonight, I'm definitely in favor of extending it and uh, continue looking at how it uh, affects our community, especially after uh, the campus opens up to some degree. So that'll give us some additional data as that begins happening, because we haven't really seen that uh, since the closure back in June uh, originally. So uh, that's what I'll say for now. And I saw councilmember McCullough.
I have a question, actually. It's, I wasn't gonna scoop promotion. I just have a question.
Oh, I don't. Go ahead. I, I'm not sure she had one either, but, or.
Um, so I just, i- in in terms of the equity that people are talking about, one of the thoughts I had was to um, maybe begin charging um, a fee for that square footage um, that the Main Street uh, restaurants are using. Um, since some people or some restaurants don't have that opportunity, I I think, you know, other other restaurants that are using sidewalks, that are using parking lots. So in in the interest of equity, I'm just wondering if we're only extending it through January, end of January, how does the billing for that sort of square footage um, fee, how does that work?
I'm not sure I have the answer to that. I may have to defer to maybe Aaron.
We can bring back the information next week unless Jaclyn, you you know already. Uh, this was a discussion in in recent, recent days. So we do have the public area use permit, which includes a sidewalk and flexome use. Um, so that would be a potential, and I'm just looking at the charge now. Um, square foot charge is currently 10 cents per square foot every month. I believe that's what it is, but we could come back to you with a more specific quote or specific numbers on that.
But it is, it's charged monthly, as that's what I was really most interested in.
Yep, I believe so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just will be very brief. I I actually think that we should um, amend the resolution to uh, or extend the um, time for when we could close Main Street to at least maybe May or June, get through the winter for them, and then see if we're through COVID at that time as well, and then revisit. You're gonna have a change uh, in January of maybe council members, you're gonna have them have to study this again. Um, I just think we should let them get through the winter and then by May or June um, revisit it and make a determination about whether it should be just temporary or permanent.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, and if there's no, no second, I would like to make a motion.
Yeah, I I think that was uh, councilmember McCullough's just comment on it, so I don't believe there's a motion on the floor yet.
Okay, I would like to uh, recommend that we extend the temporary closure of Main Street. Uh, suspicion of feet, suspension of fees until the end of January 2022.
Councilmember Thompson.
I'd like to amend the motion um, until March. Oh, I can't?
There's no second, yeah.
Ah.
Uh, that's my job, but.
Gotta be faster.
I'll second it for discussion.
All right, we have a motion by councilmember McNeil to uh, let's see, extend the temporary closure of Main Street and suspension of fees until January 31st, thirty, uh, 2022, uh, with a second by councilmember Agnew. Discussion.
Yeah, uh, if I like to speak to my, my motion, Mayor.
Please do.
That's okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, again, I support the temporary closure until we have additional information. Um, my concern is by extending it through additional months, um, if that could be potentially looked at as a more of a permanent closure. Um, and until such time that we get information back from uh, city, the city staff, to let us know that that would not be considered. Um, what I've heard today is it would be okay to go to the end of January, but no indication that going further would uh, would would have uh, consequences if we did so.
Councilmember Thompson.
I heard somebody say that um, it was the permanent closure that would trigger um, clawbacks. Is there anybody here that can confirm that?
I think we're actually not sure yet.
Okay.
Um, there, uh, I know staff was discussing that. They're not exactly sure. Uh, we'll have to get more details.
Okay, but if that were something that came up and they said, hey, the difference between January and March is gonna be a million dollars. That's a decision we could come back and make and say, hey, we're not gonna do that, right? Like, if we, if we go until, you know, a couple of months later tonight, it's not gonna cost us a million dollars. We feel fairly comfortable with that?
I'd say so.
Um, the other thing that I would like to come back, um, in addition to a proposed fee structure at whatever time this uh, comes back, is um, a proposal to allow, like we spoke about, temporary access for public safety during a closure. You know, whether that be removable ballards, whatever that looks like. I think that's something important that we need to solve for, um, rather than just worry about. I have an amending motion. Is now an okay time to make it, or should we allow for more discussion?
That's up to you, councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, what do you think? It's your meeting.
I wasn't seeing anyone else having their cards up at this point, so.
Okay.
That might have been the discussion.
Um, in that case, I would like to amend the motion on the floor um, to change the date from January 1st to March 31st. And I would like to add to instruct staff to come back with options to allow public safety access during the temporary closure.
So just to clarify, the only motion that we can really entertain would be to um, uh, do the closure till March 31st. The instruction to staff is something we can do separately. So I think the the formal motion would just be to extend to March 31st.
Do I need to do anything to undo that from what I just said?
No, as long as you're okay with me kind of jumping in and amending it. Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm used to it.
Yeah, we would need a second in order to pursue discussion on that topic.
Okay, um, in that case, I simply move to uh, keep it closed through March 31st. I'm in the motion.
Councilmember Doer.
In that motion.
All right, we have a motion by councilmember Thompson to extend the temporary closure of Main Street and suspension of fees until March 31st, 2022, with a second by councilmember Doer. Uh, discussion on this amendment. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Um, so if we, in the, between now and March, if we hear that the closure timeframe uh, is in jeopardy of costing the city uh, money, we will be able to make a change to uh, tonight's motion. Is that correct?
Correct. We can always revisit the matter at a future council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yeah.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Count Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
No.
Passes six one with councilmember Agnew in the um, negative.
And so we are, the new main motion is now that there, we would extend the temporary closure through March 31st of 2022. Um, and so we can entertain discussion and then vote on that motion.
Is there any discussion on the current main motion? All right, seeing none. City clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
No.
Passes six one with councilmember Agnew in the negative.
Thank you, everyone. Another good discussion on that topic. All right, that brings us through the agenda bills. Uh, now on to council conversations. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, I asked um, our city clerk Laura to bring something up for me, and while she's doing that, I just wanted to preface this. Um, so uh, civil service commissioner uh, Manki found this today and was sharing it with me. And I said, she's just had an anniversary. So I did a little sleuthing in uh, Jim's autobiography, and um, I'm just impressed at how you guys hit the ground running. That did, uh, Jim, uh, Jim was a went to Alaska as a cook, um, and he cleaned bush pilots airplanes, and he dug holes for dynamite. He was drafted in the army, and then he came back and he found this beautiful bribe. So um, happy anniversary, Rosemary. You were, you were a stunning bride, and I'm sure Jim's socks were rolling up and down when he saw you.
Yes, I'll, I'll say happy anniversary, and yeah, this was uh, a nice surprise when I I saw this circulating, and I thought it would be an enjoyable topic uh, to bring up and uh, share with everyone else. Councilmember McCullough?
Yes, and thank you very much. It was my 58th year. And when, when we first managed the Pines apartment, the Pines, we had five jobs between us. We did both, both of us did the apartment. I worked for Bothell Medical Clinic, Jim did landscaping, he had a cleaners. And also um, we all worked hard and we got, and we enjoyed this town and Bothell and the community, and we and I still do, and my husband did a lot to contribute to it. So thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Agnew, I think I saw your card earlier.
Well, I'll start off with saying happy anniversary, Rosemary. And, you know, we talked about a lot of things tonight, and the the Delta variant came up a number of different times. Uh, I I would like to find out how uh, we are with vaccines uh, with our first responders, both fire and police. Uh, I'd like the city to uh, get some numbers and give us the numbers and and see where we are. If I can get some support for that.
Councilmember McCullough. You're on mute. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I would support that. I think that's very important. I'm not just our first responders, but also for our uh, police and fire as well. Thank you for bringing that up.
Councilmember Thompson.
I, first off, happy anniversary, councilmember McCullough. Um, yeah, I hadn't had a chance to say that yet. Um, and yeah, I'm, I fully support councilmember Agnew. I'd like to see where we stand. Um, I mean, I think part of, I mean, public safety's big job is to keep the public safe, and vaccines are a way that we can do that. And um, I think it's really important that our public safety officers do everything they can to keep the public safe, because that is their job.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Uh, Rosemary, happy, happy, happy anniversary. Um, and I do support um, councilmember Agnew's um, vaccination. I I I believe that, if I'm not mistaken, that um, there's gonna be a mandate, if not already, there's going to be one here soon about number of employees. Uh, but more importantly, it's just about keeping our first responders and our community safe, and so I a hundred percent uh, support it. Anything we can do to to keep our community safe.
Councilmember Doer.
I want to thank councilmember Agnew for bringing it up again. Um, I know there were a number of us who were interested um, last week. I would very much like to know where where we stand, and I think um, depending on where we stand, we might have something else to say about it. Um, so thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tom, for bringing it up. Uh, I do, I think it's important. Uh, I think it's a piece of information that uh, we should all be aware of on the council and help us in our decisions on uh, everything related with it. So, yeah, thanks for bringing it up.
Hey, hey, thank you. I had one more thing. In the last meeting, I asked the city to uh, try to give us some sort of report as to where we are with the fire stations and adding that uh, 845 and 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 where are we, where are we going with that? Uh, we haven't had a whole lot of information. We know that uh, 42 is gonna start construction here shortly. Uh, and the other thing I I I want us to think about at some point in time is uh, either merging with other fire departments or police agencies or getting a fee for service. Financially, uh, that may help us considerably, and we need to, to look at those venues later on down the road. And I'd appreciate some support for this.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Um, yeah, I would like to get some updates on what's happening with our, with our uh, project as it comes along. I think staff knows that. Um, the discussion of uh, forming some regional coalitions, that's a big can of worms. So um, we need to tread lightly and very circumspectly with that. But yes, we also need to um, think about how we can creatively um, provide service for everyone in Bothell. Make sure it's done.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm just gonna veer off of that for a minute, even if someone wants to come back and comment. I think that would be good. The report, I would appreciate reports as well. But I want to take this opportunity. Four years ago, we hired Jeanne Ash as our economic development manager, and I just want to applaud the work that she's done over the four years. She uh, just recently uh, had block D closed and sell, and she did an amazing job with the extensions on that. Also, her pop ups are coming, that will be part of Bothell for helping businesses of people um, of different cultures, of different needs, and who want to start up businesses. That's another really big plus. And also, the difference that she's made for our small business people whenever they've had a need, and she's tried to solve their problems or give them options. So I just want to applaud her work and and tell you how valuable I think she is for our city. and, and tell you how valuable I think she is for our city.
Councilmember Thompson.
Um, yeah, I'd love to hear an update on what's going on with the fire stations. I'd agree with Councilmember Agnew's idea there. Um, merging departments is a really big thing that I don't know that is inside the scope of council conversations. Um, and I don't know if I can uh, support that enthusiastically. Um, I'm not against the idea, but I just don't know that this is the, the time or the place, but um, would love to get a report, for sure.
Well, I think we'll have our mid-biennial budget update, where we can talk about all those budgetary and big picture items, so. But yeah, it's definitely uh, a topic that just seems to swirl around in all the different communities to try and maximize efficiency and streamline everything as much as possible. So I, I think it's a, a great concept. I, I think just trying to make it work is always challenging, find that right balance. So I, I think we're always trying to find ways to deliver better service for lower dollars. Um, so it's hard to say what that will look like, but. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I do support uh, getting some more updates, uh, more information. Um, and I'm always supportive of understanding um, how we can be more fiscally responsible. So if that means just having a conversation on how that looks, then I am supportive of it. If somebody has anything else, I'll make a motion. I haven't made one in a while. Wow, I make a motion to a chair.
I see no opposition.
Second.
I think thumbs up all around. Thank you, everyone. Great, another great council meeting.
Good work tonight, everybody. We got through a lot. I'm really.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeannie, for bringing up that beautiful picture. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness, well, it was a beautiful subject matter.
Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary. See you all next week. Good night.
Bye.
See you next month.